This is a regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry, February 5. It's eight o'clock. And we have on the agenda four items. For your information, item number three, which is the continuation of the public hearing for the site plan approval. This is for the mixed-use building at 33 Main. The applicant requested to be taken off the agenda and to be placed in a future meeting. So we have four items, three items remaining. The first one is adopting the minutes of the planning board meeting of January 8. I was not here. Did we get copies of it?
We did not.
So therefore, we'll leave that for the next meeting. Item number two is the public hearing for site plan approval. And this is a proposed, this is a public hearing for the proposed in-ground pool and spa on a property located in 10 Appleton. Since it's a public hearing, I move that we open the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Public hearing is open. And therefore, the applicant, please.
Good evening, board members. My name is Greg McWilliams. I'm an architect representing the homeowner, Rocco, in Maria Adana. As we've been before this board on a couple occasions, what we have here, I'll actually stand over here. We have a lot in the OF3 zone. It's approximately 19,000 square feet. There's an existing residence that was constructed about two years ago. What we're proposing now is a swimming pool in the backyard and a modest pool deck. The pool itself is preformed. It's in ground. It's about 800 square feet. And the pool deck around it is about 580 square feet, and that will be paved. The property also has a shed and a greenhouse in the back. The pool equipment will be in the shed. It will not be outside, it will be inside.
So the only structure you're working on then is the pool itself and the paving around the pool?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The proposal conforms to all zoning regulations in terms of setbacks, coverage, and everything else. At the last meeting, the board requested that we do a key plan that shows the existing residences in the greater area. At large scale, obviously, they're cut off, but that's the proximity to the subject property. And in the greater areas, you can see homes are, excuse me, more distant from the house itself. Another point that was asked was to provide screening. Presently, there's a fence along this side right now, a chain-link fence. The homeowner's going to do a black chain-link fence here and here, and obviously buttting into the house. The screening at this point, which I'll flip to the photos after I have my explanation here, there's evergreen screening pretty much all the way around the property right now. There's a gap in this area right here where we're proposing some Norway pines to be planted. I'll actually go to the photos. Okay. I have nine photos. They're going counterclockwise. Okay, this is the first one. This is if you're standing around where the pool is, just looking to the right, which is, I think, too Appleton place. And these are six-to-eight-foot evergreens that were planted at the time the house was constructed. And they're pretty solid all the way along the property line. This is that same row down in the corner. There was some existing plantings here now of the same size and shape. Turning the corner again, that's existing greenhouse and shed. And as you see, you know, the screening is pretty dense up to this point right here. Here's a gap right here where there is a little bit of a gap, and we're proposing to put some Norway pine, Norway spruces in that area. Continuing over this corner, there's some mixed low vegetation. There's a couple of pine trees. There are a couple of smaller deciduous trees. This is closer up of this. This is actually turning the corner in the backyard there. You can see it's pretty dense, and these were taken at this time of the year. There's no leaves on them, so you're seeing, and it's, I guess, at their barest condition. This is moving up the side yard, mint shrubbery. Okay. And we're coming up to where the house is, and this is the house that's next door to us. There's this very large cedar tree, I think, or I'm not exactly sure of the species. It's a pine tree. And then there's these evergreen shrubs here that are six to seven feet. They go all the way up to the street. And that's pretty much the perimeter of the property. So again, here's the shot from the driveway, one of that first line of trees that I showed you. So basically, we're just proposing that one gap at the back of the shed for additional planting.
Any questions? About anybody? Board?
Since the last meeting, we, the board, has received a letter from a resident who lives to the north on the, if you go out the back and on out to, on Bray Side Lane.
Yes, I actually received that letter late this afternoon.
Good.
From Mr. Palmer.
Good.
That's right in here. Right, that's the residence.
Right. And she states in the letter that because of the amount of digging that was done, there was a change in the water flow, the underground water flow, not the surface water flow, but the underground water flow, which invaded her house and caused her substantial damage, and therefore need for remediation and a system to control that. It's my interest, and I hope the board's interest, to structure something where we want to avoid that happening again, and also put in place a system that if something does happen, there are funds available both to further remediate the problem and to compensate the homeowner.
In my conversation with Mr. Palmer today, we discussed the memo that he'd sent to me. There's three things that were really, that he suggested, and I thought they were good ideas, and I certainly agree with him. We have our cul-de-sacs in this area right here. We have 12 of them. A cul-de-cac typically does not have a solid bottom. When the water goes in there, there's gravel base, and the water percolates out. What we're going to do here is three-quarters of these, nine of these, we're going to put solid bottom in so that the water stays in the cul-de-cac a little bit longer. They're all predicated on a seven-and-a-half-inch rainfall. So the bottom three, the water will go in sequence through the ones with the solid bottom. It'll get to three in a row at the end, which will have, will not have a bottom. So the water will seep out at a slower rate in those areas there. In addition to that, the gravel having underneath these is usually a textile filter fabric that's put under that. We're going to put a low-perosity filter fabric under there. Again, so it's going to hold the water longer in the tanks, and it will seep out and percolate as much shorter.
Your galleys become tanks, in effect.
Yes. And they're sized for seven-and-a-half inches of rain.
Can I ask, George, how does that sound? Does that sound reasonable?
That does sound reasonable to us, yes.
Good, thank you.
Another thing that was discussed is the possibility of a bond for one year. That possibly the homeowner has to pay a bond for one year's time, just to see after the construction that, you know, there are no drainage problems.
It's not unusual, what Steve brought up, it's not unusual
Right.
That if anyone changes the water course on their property to impact the abutting properties, that there's a requirement that you are supposed to maintain it as it was.
Right.
And hopefully, what you've just described would not increase the amount of flow.
Right. This is all subsurface. Obviously, you know, everything is designed as per code and regulations and stuff, and but, you know, if water courses or change below the surface, there's no way of knowing that. But I feel that these measures that I just discussed will certainly help.
Okay, and by the bond, for the one-year bond, to at least make sure it gets through its season. Good. In the future, if something, we have a tsunami coming through the area and there's a change, that would be a whole other book.
Right.
I would suggest the bond also be available in case there is a problem, not only to remediate that future problem, but also to compensate Mrs. Willis for any additional cost that she has. She's already incurred substantial costs that she did not ask to be compensated, so I think that seems very reasonable.
Now, the wording on this bond and everything, that's something that will be taken up in a resolution? That decided by this board?
I think it'd be mentioned, and I think
Mr. Palmer?
The village attorney is not here at the moment, but I would think it would be set up in some manner that would be acceptable to the village.
Correct, to the village attorney, right.
Yep, to the village attorney.
They've spoken to generically that it would cover both remediating of the subject property and the neighboring property.
Good, good. Okay. Any other comments from board members? If none, anyone here wish to speak on this subject? How nice.
It's a precedent.
I'm overwhelmed. Okay, then at this point, since there aren't any other comments from anyone else, I move we close the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Brian's not voting. Okay, so we have the unanimous answer. Good. The answer is closed. At that point, any comments? If not, we do have a prepared motion, a resolution, that I'd like to make, which includes some of the wording that you heard a few minutes ago. This is the resolution granting site plan approval for 10 Appleton. Whereas Adana, owner of the property at 10 Appleton, has applied for the plans for approval, reconstructing this swimming pool and make other related improvements, et cetera. Whereas the improvements are detailed on your drawing, whereas the property shown on Section 9, Sheet 28B, blank, blank, of located in OF zone, you said OF is correct, zone, district, whereas the planning board has inspected the property, quite familiar with it, and is familiar with the nature of the site and the surrounding area, proposed improvements and uses of the property, whereas the planning board reviewed the application at the meeting on December 4 and held a duly noticed public hearing on January 28. And whereas the applicant was continued to the February 5 planning board meeting, whereas and whereas the planning board considered all comments, both oral and written, to understand the property's characteristics and the precise location of proposed improvements. And whereas the planning board has reviewed the staff report prepared by HON Engineering dated December 29 for the application. And whereas the construction of accessory swimming pool is a Type 2 action under the State Environmental Review Act, and is exempt from further environmental, what is it, environmental review? Yes. Now therefore, being resolved, that the planning board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry hereby grant site plan approval for the subject application conditioned on the following. All applicable provisions of the site plan regulation of the county and state shall be met. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, all required site plan and engineering review fees shall be paid, review fees shall be paid, and all items of the village consulting engineer's memo shall be addressed to his satisfaction, which includes the issue about the drainage. So that would be in there. Next, the following language should be added to the plan, subject approved, subject to all requirements of the conditions of the resolution of the planning board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry. And this is important, that once it's signed, for any change, erasure, modification, absent reapproval of the planning board, voids the approval. The resolution is dated tonight, and I made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Can I make one addition to the motion, please?
Go ahead, please.
On number three, it says shall post a performance bond for said additional work to be held for one year. It's for additional work and for costs incurred by any damages
Damages.
To a neighbor.
Okay.
To a neighboring property.
If we can add that in, perhaps as a, make that paragraph two of the application, of the resolution.
You might, Mr. Chairman, you might have the previous resolution. This one was modified to then, which has a number three.
Oh, this is an old one. Ah, sorry about that. That's old news.
This is different than the original.
Okay, then I'll read.
It goes in the number three.
Yeah, that becomes number three. Let me read that section. So the original number three becomes four, and going back, I'm going to give you a new three. The existing and proposed storm drain existence shall be modified and upgraded to limit and control storm water runoff that may impact adjoining properties to the satisfaction of the village's engineer. Additionally, prior to the issuance of a cert, certificates of occupancy for the pool improvement, the applicant should have a $5,000 performance bond for said drainage work to be held for one year and utilize, and I'll edit it in there, and utilize the fund any additional drainage improvements as deemed necessary by the village's consulting engineer, and to
Village Attorney.
I don't know the word is, wait. To compensate for any damages to the abutting properties.
To the satisfaction of the village attorney.
Of the village attorney. Don't ever leave out satisfaction of the village attorney. I wouldn't want him unsatisfied. Okay, so we now have the motion, which is now five paragraphs. Okay, it was made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? We are unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to, oh, we're on a roll. This is great. Okay.
We've got square wheels on right now.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's see, where are we? Is that the last one? No, okay. This is a continued discussion of proposed provisions to the zoning code as per referral from the Board of Trustees for review of proposed changes to substance and procedures of the zoning ordinance of the Village of Dobbs Ferry related to the Architectural Review Board and other issues. We've had a series of meetings on this for some time now. And as of today, I think we've had a couple comments among the different board members. And it seems there was quite a bit of research done by one of our board members, and I would ask Mr. Lane if you can do a short presentation of what you learned. I thought it was an outstanding summary.
Yeah, if it's accurate.
Actually, it's nothing to do with the issue.
I think it is. Also, Neil, I have, I made copies of, you can take, you can take a couple of, this is
Thank you so much.
It's copies of the, I mean, it's copies of the memo. So just by way of background, it, because I know many of the people in the public who were here were listening to our discussion last, last time we had a working session that the public couldn't speak, oh, that the public could not speak at, but listen to. So you know that one of the things that Javier and I kind of volunteered to do, and Steve helped also, was sending me some things, was to try to understand, as you know, as and as the board knows, we've been trying to wrestle with the responsibilities, the relative responsibilities of the planning board and the Architecture and Historic Review Board, and trying to figure out where that line is and how we should, how we might want to change the review procedures. So I started looking into what our neighboring villages do, Hastings in particular, and Irvington also. I have to say, I feel more confident about the research in Hastings because I spoke directly with the guy who was the chair of the planning board there, so I got an even better idea about how they kind of manage things. And I guess there are a couple of takeaways. I won't kind of do these in order. I'll do them in the order in which they require the least explanation to the most explanation, maybe. So first of all, to the third bullet down, in both of those municipalities, and I didn't, I want to also figure out what happens in Ardsley, the BOT is not involved in the review process. So there are different scenarios for how the planning board and the Architecture and Historic Review Board interact, but the planning board is not involved, except in there, I think that there's, in Hastings, one exception is that if there are sort of cluster, if there's a cluster housing proposal.
Oh, you meant trustees? You said planning.
I'm sorry.
Trustees.
That the Board of Trustees gets involved, that there's a cluster subdivision on a very large piece of property. But otherwise, they are not involved in the process. As you know, here, whatever, however we work out what happens between the planning board and the Architecture and Historic Review Board, ultimately, for many of the districts, the Board of Trustees has a final say. That's not really on the table in this current discussion of the kinds of smaller fixes, and well, maybe some of them aren't small, I don't know, the fixes that we're trying to make to the current code. But, you know, it's something that probably should continue to be out there as a, as a point of discussion. I know some people feel that the BOT should actually not be, have final say. Again, that's not really on the table for this. The next one that maybe is sort of the, sort of not controversial, and I think we've talked about it a little bit here, is that the business about view shed. Both towns have a kind of view preserve, we have, as you know, the series of viewpoints that we've mapped, and there's been some complaining about the map and so on. They, both Hastings and Irvington have a view preservation district, which is like an overlay on top of multiple zones in all the areas where they feel that views of the Hudson River or the Palisades are affected. And I think that that's something that we, I know we've had discussions with here and with the public about whether or not we should also have some kind of overlay on top of the existing zoning along the aqueduct to do a similar thing, to sort of have some additional provisions about the way views are considered and so on. So I think that's worth talking about. In terms of jurisdiction, in both Hastings and Irvington, the planning board is, with advice from the ARB, if they want it, from the Architecture Review Board if they want it, makes the final decision about the impact of the view preservation district. And I think the reason for that probably is because the architectural details don't end up having a lot to do with the views, but where, how big the building is and where it's sited and how it's sited does. So I think that as we're trying to sort out the sky exposure plane issues and so on, and whose responsibility is what, I think it's worth noting that in Hastings and Irvington, that decision about impacts and views is a plan, is ultimately, again, can be with the advice of the ARB, that it's ultimately a decision that the planning board makes in those places. Another thing that has come up in our discussion, the last bullet there, is about the timeframes related to review. And I, and I think this is important because I think there was a sense on the part of some people in the public that the, that the imposition of a kind of a time limit on how long the, the Architecture Review Board had to act on something was a kind of a way of sort of running out the clock or something. And again, in both Irvington and Hastings, that review is time constrained. There's either two meetings or a certain number of weeks, and the default is actually approval. If the, if the, if the Architecture and Historic Review Board doesn't act on it, then it's deemed by the planning board to have been approved. So again, I, you know, not saying what we should do, I'm just saying, again, that these are sort of data points for us as we're trying to figure this out. So I guess the top two bullets are sort of maybe the most significant kind of, kind of part of this. And I, and I want to be careful about the first bullet because I had a discussion with Steve Tilly this afternoon about some of this stuff, and he and I have a slightly different reading of the way it works in Irvington. It's definitely the case in Hastings that the ARB is advisory to the planning board. So what happens is that somebody comes in, the planning board does their thing with it, and then it is, can be sent on sort of early in the process if the architecture, if the planning board imagines that there's going to be some issue, they refer it to the Architecture and Historic Review Board, the ARB. In Hastings, they look at it and they write some, a report that they give to the planning board. And then the planning board ultimately takes that advice and folds that into whatever their final approval is of the project. And according to the chair, Jamie Cameron, the guy who's the chair of the planning board there, he said it's, you know, they tend to, they don't have many instances where they're not prepared to accept the recommendations of the Architecture and Historic Review Board, so, or they're, they're ARB, they don't have the H in it over there. And so, so it's a model that we could also think about, whether or not we want a similar process. And because of that, because it's the, ultimately what their Architecture Review Board says is, then comes back to the planning board, there's no need to kind of necessarily draw twice, you know, we've been wrestling a lot with trying to draw a line around issues related to massing, about what we should look at versus the Architecture and Historic Review Board should look at. And I guess my conclusion after kind of looking at Irvington and Hastings is that really both boards should not, do not need to be constrained in terms of what they are allowed to look at. If the ARB wants to look, or the Architecture and Historic Review Board wants to look at massing as part of their architecture review, then they should be able to, as long as it ultimately comes back to, to the, the planning board to kind of probably accept their recommendations, but to put it together. So the, and the applicant can start, you know, they, I don't know if in Hastings that they have to literally wait to be referred to the Architecture Review Board before they start that process. But it seems like an idea appeals to me, that somehow we, we give up this business by trying to list exactly what we look at and list out exactly what they look at. Both boards can look at both things, and they coordinate ultimately in terms of the sequence by which they, one board makes their findings clear to the other board. And I suppose there could be situations where if we really get something back from the Architecture and Historic Review Board that we don't understand and don't agree with, then maybe we have to get them here and say, make your, explain it to us, make your case, whatever that is. So that's a kind of a, and in this document that I just gave Neil, and I have copies, I emailed copies to my fellow planning board members, it has this kind of written out in a little bit more, a little bit more extensively with, and pieces cut and pasted out of both codes, which of course is an extremely dangerous thing, right? So I can't promise that, oh, David, you just missed the, I actually invited David to come because, David was part of the committee that the mayor appointed to kind of look at this, but you can look at those bullet points and probably pretty much get it. Or here, David, you can also take this. So you can take this. So I think that that really pretty much, I mean, I'm happy to kind of talk about it.
Yeah, I
Fellow board, you guys have questions if you want to?
It's, reading this, and I read it earlier today, it's much more efficient. My concern, and I've been seeing more and more of this, an applicant comes in and is dragged out, and by the way, a lot of the Article 78s around the estate are based on an applicant saying, give me a goddamn answer. I don't have an answer. And they drag it out so that you don't get an answer. I think what you mentioned here, collecting the information from Hastings and Irvington, they tend to avoid that by having an answer. You're going to get an answer, and if you don't have a meeting and you don't come up with an answer, the default is approval. We had that issue here in the village. The only comment I had, and it seems we have this, another write-up on this, is that if the, if there's no quorum for a meeting, and it runs on, and we have a period, the applicant should not be punished if the board doesn't have a quorum. I think in some manner, board members have a responsibility to come to the meeting so an applicant knows where he's going. And that was one comment, that if there's no quorum, it, the clock stops. No, if the applicant doesn't show up, that's another story. But I think it's a lot fairer, this, of what you proposed. I believe so.
You know, it's for discussion. The other thing is, you know, you can write all of the, it's great to write these kind of procedures. In the end, they all live in the context of whatever the kind of civic world is in each town, right? So in Hastings, their Architecture Review Board is seven people. And they don't seem to have trouble, you know, there's been some discussion about, here about, recently about trouble making sure that the Architecture and Historic Review Board is properly populated. It seems like that's been kind of taken care of. But all of these things kind of, you know, you can write it down, and then there's also the way they're actually administered in each town.
Always.
So there's a little cautionary note about just grabbing something from another town and bringing it here, but I think it's worth considering. I mean, certainly what we have now does not, I think, I think there's kind of agreement, right? What we have now doesn't make sense.
Doesn't work.
So.
I think one thing that I took away was on their Architecture Review Board, they said that if, if one of the members has, has an issue or a conflict, they recuse themselves. Here we have the, the problem Here we have the, the problem, in my view, of, of an ethics law which prohibits
Right, Steve Tilly was a victim of that, right?
Architects who are working in the village from, from serving on a board where they might, might appear. And it's just silly. I, in my view, it's just silly. We, we lose the, the potential benefit of some of the best people that would be serving on, on that board particularly. I think that's where the issue is. And.
Because I know Steve Tilly was actually asked to step down on the basis of that, right?
He had to step down his chair. And we've had the problem with, with other people, even in this room, that we're unable to continue to serve on boards here because of that. And it's, if, if we could make one recommendation to the trustees, I think that would be one that we should highlight.
With, with the, with the understanding, you preface this with the fact that there's an ethics code that says if someone on a board in any way believes he has some conflict, he should recuse himself.
Yeah, that's easy.
That's, that should be.
But to be absolutely prohibited is silly.
Well, the objective here was there were sufficient complaints.
No, there was one complaint.
Really? Well, not, not on Steve Tilly?
Yes.
It was one?
But it was sufficient. It must have been a good one.
No, it was another architect.
Ah, the answer to it is, I believe that architects and engineers, I don't know about you guys, but architects and engineers answer to a higher authority, and they should be able to say, I have some ethical.
Doesn't, I, I don't really get it because we, we've had all kinds of issues with the project at the intersection of Beachdale and Judson. And somebody could easily have said, you know, Rob, you live three houses down.
No, that doesn't work.
You should recuse, no, but I'm saying all of us live, all of us live here. So it's easily the case that at some point, whether we're architects or not has nothing to do with it. We live in the village. So at some point, something's bound to come before us that somehow, well, as you do with Mercy College, when you recuse yourself.
No, no, I had to recuse because I'm, I'm paid by Mercy College whenever I teach. So, but I did have that.
It seems silly to me to just target it against the AHRB when every, well, all of us, some are gonna sooner or later be in a situation.
No, I, I was actually in that situation where somebody came up to the board mem, to the board. This is, I'm not going to mention what the project was, and it was quite a few years ago, that I lived within a quarter of a mile. And so I worked out if you drew the diameters or the radii going around with all of the board members, we'd have to have members from Osning here to be, you know,
Be completely.
Without any kind of a connection.
One of the interesting things is reading other villages' codes. I mean, it's, I don't know how interesting it is, but in Tarrytown, it is required on the AHRB, the ARB to have one person who lives in town that has passed the bar, was a lawyer, and one who is a practicing architect in town.
Just one?
Well, at least one.
An architectural board with one architect?
No, no, at least one.
At least one, and they have to have someone who's actually a lawyer, passed the bar?
Does he have to be able to write and read?
They didn't, they didn't specify.
Okay.
So.
So I don't know, are there other comments from, because I know that Dwight, we also have, are we going to show the slide that you prepared?
If your comments are done, I want to go to the, to the list.
No, no, there is.
I thought Darius was going to be here. Are you going to discuss the list?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, when we.
Could you bring that up next?
Okay, I would.
Well, and so let me just ask, because I knew you also had a short presentation.
It's about the MDR one zone.
Oh, okay.
Maybe he should do his then.
Yeah.
And then we can.
Steve, you do yours first. We're not opening to the, when we finish our comments, then.
Wait, now, do you think it makes sense to let him do his thing or not?
Don't open, when we finish up here.
Yeah.
And then we can focus on this list, which is really the punchline here.
Before I get to a point, no, this is good. Before it got cold, I went around to all the MDR one zones in Downe's Ferry and walked around with a camera. And the impetus for doing this was that, it was, the issues that came up with Florence Avenue, the original application was for a, a townhouse structure, four in a row. It just got incredible resistance from the community. And I realized that, that of many of these MDR one zones, just, there, there's differences within the zones themselves that make them, you know, demand maybe a closer look. So.
Steve, you do some, I know already what the MDR zone is.
Oh, MDR zone is.
Multiple zones.
Yeah, one, two, three family, detached structures, cluster housing.
On our list is the little conflict of what one section of the ordinance says and doesn't say another relating to townhomes.
Townhomes are shown to be permitted on a, on a chart on Table A, but not in the code. So that's, that has, that's something we need to resolve. So this is a much longer presentation. I just crammed in the five pages so that we can get through it quickly. Can you go to the next one? But you see where these are? There's a, this is the old croton aqueduct and the waterfront. This is, this is, what is the name of that street?
Riverside.
Yeah, Riverside, River View. And Rochambeau. This is along by Master School, over by the sawmill. Okay, you can go to the next one. So Rochambeau Avenue, you know, I was thinking, like, one of the other issues that came up was the views along the aqueduct and, and the MDR one zone that faces the Hudson. And it's, you know, that was a problem because if you block the views of the Hudson, it's not only blocked the viewing platforms, but it was, you know, it reduces the value of the town and the properties and so on. So this is just an example of a place where there are already multiple housing, MF two zone housing on the street. The view is west, so you can see, you know, the, looking down the street, you can actually see a little bit of the aqueduct here and possibly the Palisades. And, and townhomes might work on this street. You can go to the next one. Florence and Scott, this is an interesting property because, interesting areas because along Southfield, Southfield, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Southfield. There are already a row of townhome-like structures. They look out towards, towards the valley. But there's a huge elevation change, and up on, on Florence, there's smaller detached structures. And it was not a successful solution. Nobody wanted it up there. You can go to the next one. Broadway, Livingston, and the aqueduct. This long narrow strip here is all zoned for, if, according to the table, there can be townhomes built on the strip, and because of the shape here, you get this kind of thing, which would negate the nice little modulated views that you see from the aqueduct. Go to the next one. So, quickly, I agree, it, it deserves a better look, a closer look.
What, what's the difference? And Dwight? George, I have a two-family zone. If I build one over one or a side-by-side, both legal?
It's more of a Brian question, but I, Brian, the answer is, I think, yes. If it's a two-family zone, one side-by-side or one over the other.
So one is called a two-family house and the other one is called a townhouse? Two townhouses?
It could be called a duplex or two, two-family house.
Side-by-side?
Yeah.
But the zoning is the same?
Yes. This is going to get, we'll need our attorneys before we get too far on this one, but, but yes, I think most people would call that both two-family houses, and others might call that one side-by-side is a duplex. And they'd be right.
Because more and more people.
They would call it a townhouse.
More, more and more people prefer having their own without having someone walking around upstairs. So that if I have a two-family zone, and I have a choice, I have the same bathrooms, the same kitchens, the same everything, but I do it side-by-side. And, and there seems to be, and talking to people in the village, a lot of confusion on that.
Well, the ones on Ashford Avenue at, at LaFergie are two.
Side-by-side.
Side-by-side, well, a series over there. People would.
Wait, those are, right, those houses are each two-family, two, two-family house, or are they more than two-family? There's just two, there's, those are two, two-family houses?
But I, I think part of my point was that both in Florence Avenue and Nineteenth Livingston, the developer looked at the code and, you know, it said, you could put a townhouse here according to the way he's interpreting it. And then he gets all this resistance, spends a lot of money.
Yeah, that's why you have this last item, a moratorium. If I have a two-family zone, and I want to put up a two-family house, you just put a moratorium if I go side-by-side rather than one above the other? Is that what that says?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a question. Townhome shares one or more.
I hate to go in front of a judge on that one.
That's not the intent. We maybe have to watch the language, but the issue that we were trying to address was the conflict in the ordinance, in the MDR one zone, where in one section it does not include townhouses as permitted, and in another, the table shows townhouses.
We ought to straighten that out.
So, yeah, we, that's what we need to clarify. We were, I think a single family, a two-family, or a three-family is permitted in that zone. And I think if they have one on top of the other, or side-by-side, they would still be permitted. If we drafted the language correctly and had a moratorium on townhouses, we would specifically exclude one, two, and three-family houses, whatever their configuration.
Right, so there are kind of two issues here, right? One issue is, you know, probably all agree we need, it's worth, it's good to have an MDR zone, right? We probably want a diversity of housing types. And so we want to clarify what's in it. And then the other issue is the, where we map it, right? And those are two, those are kind of two different.
But I'd like, and Darius isn't yet, I'd like a legal interpretation of what I had mentioned before. Of if I, if I have a perfect right to build a two-family house, can you, as a village, can Brian say, no, you can't do side-by-side, you can only do one above the other? All the requirements, I'll meet every blessed requirement that you have in the building code.
So it could be a definition of form, I don't know how you do it.
I don't know, because I want to build a two-family house, and I know that I'm going to be, I want, I want to live in one of them. And I don't want anybody upstairs. And so I would like my own entrance, and I want.
So you can live upstairs?
Don't get wise. There's always one guy.
No, but how do we, the, the situation that happened to Florence Avenue where Mr. O'Brien came in with four in a row or five in a row.
Oh, you see, that was the planning board said cluster. And so they came in, they cut down and eliminated the side yards. No. Otherwise, there would have been two.
No, remember his original plan had?
Oh, he had seven or eight, no, absolutely.
And it just got so much community resistance.
Because the planning board and, and the board of trustees said, you don't need the side yards. It should have been, and if, based on what we're saying now, should have been, could have been, would have been issue, which is of course worthless. It's just a lot of.
But it's a different way of looking at it with the side yards.
With the, that's, you, you clustered it. You clustered it. As soon as you clustered it, it became a row of buildings. Now, if you don't want to, if you don't want that, don't allow the clustering. But I have difficulty until I hear an attorney's interpretation of how you could stop me from building side-by-side. I don't know how you can do that. We've had many people come in over the years, one over the other, without hesitation, two-family zone, and there they were. And then it started quite a few years ago to build them side-by-side. Still, individual lots, side yards, everything the same, but two units.
What about just changing the definition of townhomes to allow for those?
Some, something has to be done.
I mean, it could be a simple just changing that one.
It could be, or if side-by-side doesn't bother anybody, then let the boards decide whether or not they want to cluster. Because by not clustering, you're going to end up with the same building.
But to be fair to the applicant, you know, when he goes in, he should know, it should be clear to the.
That he's allowed either one.
Yeah, it should be clear to the applicant what he's allowed to do, so he doesn't have to fight over it.
Part of our difficulty is an applicant comes in and really has no idea which way to go. And that should not be, it should be simple. Okay.
Just a couple of quick things on that, and then I've punched down this list and hit the things we can.
Please. Could you put, could you put these up on the board? Do you have this?
Do we have them on? I think we have them, right, Marcus?
No? No? Okay.
If you want me to, I can, in ten minutes, I'll do it. Yeah, it's.
They, they're fairly straightforward.
Okay, okay, just then read them out. Go ahead.
But just a quick thing before that. I think you need, we need to distinguish clustering. It's a different issue. You cluster to preserve open space.
Yeah.
The project that was, right, and it's not the type of thing, when Florence Avenue project came in, that was not a cluster to me. Didn't, didn't meet the general purposes of it.
But we eliminated the side yards.
I don't know.
Well, that, not initially.
In the later stages, when we were debating about whether it was going to be two, two-family houses and so on, then we eliminated the sky exposure, and some other things to put them next to each other. But the earliest iteration that I saw, I think when I first turned the board, was a townhouse development of however many.
Yeah. But I know, of the very first time this village used a cluster, it was for the condo called Walden Wood. That was the very first time, first condominium, everyone was scared out of their skulls. A condominium, oh, it's in Florida, it's in Europe. I think the pyramids were built condominium. But in any case.
But to Dwight's point, that was a case where you had a huge piece of property.
That's, and we have it for conservation.
Served open space by piling them all next to each other. That's not Florence.
That was a true, and that is the best example of clustering.
Florence is not that condition ever.
Right. Let's, let's just, if we could, just take a quick look, and I know
Go ahead.
The other board members and the public will probably want to get in some thoughts on some of these. The first bullet point is, or first numbered point is that I think there's consensus by trustee Caningsburg's committee and the board that we're, we should get rid of the tack because it just adds a step, and it did not really facilitate development. And we have professional people in, in the building department, two building inspectors that can guide the development in the right track without using the tack.
Agreed.
The next was something we, that is still being battled around. And, and Rob raised a major issue, which was right now, the planning board is advisory to the board of trustees for certain five zones and properties greater than one acre when the board of trustees decides it wants to deal with that property. They have the option to opt out of that. Leaving that aside, which is a big thing, and a lot of people may want to speak to that, whether the board of trustees might want to give some of that back to the planning board or not. The issue we had was, should the AHRB also be advisory within those five zones? That's one that I think, as the, George and I and Darius will be probably trying to hammer out the language change. We need to hear from you as to what you really want for that. I also added in that it should exactly mirror what is presently, where we're advisory, the planning board is advisory. So that if we do this, making both boards advisory, it should not just be the five districts, but also the one-acre parcels. With exactly the same language that's for the planning board in the ordinance already. Next is such a waiver of the SEP. The trustee Caningsburg's committee came up with some good language for that. We've been fine-tuning that a little bit. If you, there's, the issue that was raised, I think, was that the AHRB determined that they had a test that could almost never be passed before they could use the waiver powers, and that it was not feasible to, to comply with the SEP. Making it almost like a zoning thing, and where you almost have to go to the zoning board of appeals. And, and the basic for us was, no, you should be able to use discretion on that. It should have sensitivity to the neighborhood character, that kind of thing. So we have language on that, that we've already, that you've already got before you.
So, so, are you going to, you're going to enumerate these and we're going to go back and talk about them, or you want to? Okay, so you're going to go through the whole list?
I just want to hit what all the bullets are, and then see what people want to talk about, really. The timing, Rob mentioned already, and you saw that two other communities had a forty-five day. We, we had from, heard from people, thought that maybe we should bump it up to sixty days. And then if the applicant does not attend the AHRB meeting, that doesn't count against the sixty-day timeline, et cetera.
But the last one I disagree with.
About no quorum?
If the, if the board does not have a quorum, why should the applicant be punished?
That should be written out a little farther. We got, it says no quorum. Time does not count for an extension. So if the board is not able to meet, the time is not extended, it counts.
I read it.
It's poorly phrased here. We'll go and talk about five, about massing, but I think the basic point was, and I think this is Rob's point, and probably want to hear from the rest of the board, why not have that massing both, in front of both boards? Why, why not have them as part of the planning boards? Third, this one I think is fairly concrete. I think at this point, everybody agreed. Third, this one I think is fairly concrete. I think at this point, everybody agrees that in the downtown district, the two districts, the DT and the DB zone, that the language should be clarified so that it's three stories as of right, and a fourth may be permitted. So that would be...
Can we, can we clarify this? Because that seems to be going on and on and on. The concern seems to be the height. And we discussed this at the last meeting I was here, was that if there's a business, if there's a business on the first floor requiring a higher headroom, then you may not get four stories if you were to say there's a height restriction of forty-five feet. I'm pulling a number out of the air at this moment. If the height restriction is forty-five feet, it's going to be one floor retail and two floors residential. But if the decision is to go all residential, it could be four stories.
And so I think this is further discussion we need, but I think the last time was left, Justice said, Mr. Chairman, that you could have in the DB zone forty-five feet because it requires that there be commercial use on the ground floor, and therefore there'd be...
It require commercial?
Right. Therefore, you would expect the height to be needed for that. And the DT's, uh, DT zone where it's not permitted, or it's not required for commercial use, then you could go with the forty feet. Going through is awful quick on these, and I'm thinking this, we'll come back to them, I guess, as we go.
Okay.
We have item seven is the exemptions from going to the AHRB. That's been hammered out, and I got some good language from Ed and Brian to tighten that up a little bit, but that's part of Trustee Caningsburg's recommendation also. We just discussed the townhomes. This probably should have been bulleted on the board now. Here's one that we need to discuss, number nine, and the notice provisions. Right now, we have public hearings, and both boards do, the AHRB and the planning board. There's, they're not required under our ordinance, no language is in the ordinance, and there's no state laws that require that site plan review or architectural review have a public hearing. But I think we probably want to have public hearings. We've been holding public hearings. What we need to do is just put it in the ordinance as a requirement that there be public hearings. So the only thing about that, so, because some of these get extended and extended, we think this should, it's up to this board, but our recommendation, the staff, is that the public hearings now be written into the ordinance firmly that they're required, but for the initial meeting, rather than, because sometimes public hearings will get extended for four or five meetings, and to do the...
Then if someone appears at that meeting, they will learn that there's going to be a subsequent meeting.
That would be, I know not everybody agrees with that, but I think it's too burdensome. You set the public hearing notice up, you do the mailing, you put the sign, we have the initial public hearing, and then there's a way to track it on our website and every other way to see what's going on with that application. So...
Good.
I think that's, that's fair.
Back of this, engineering and drainage, we're all set with that, too?
Yeah, just some code clarifications and modifications, that, things that we do already, we're just gonna clarify them and put them into the code. Like, the one-hundred-year storm, it's, we do that as a practice, just because we had that issue tonight. We have that in there. Now it's made part of the code. It's, right now, it's a policy. Now it's going to be codified.
Excellent. Good.
And then the last issue is fire. Right now, the, I understand it, the New York State Building and Construction Code and Fire Safety Code, I forget the right title, just talks about new construction. Many municipalities adopt more stringent standards, and the Village of Dobbs Ferry has, requiring that if a building is renovated over fifty percent or a fifty percent addition is added onto the building, then sprinklers would be required. And I, I did hear some back and forth on that, but I don't think there's any wish to change that. That's a higher standard, more, more safety is involved in it. There is an added construction cost, which some people could object to, but the one item that was the building inspector, I think it was the building inspectors, Ed and Javier I were talking about, I think, if I had that wrong, let me know. There was, right now, if a room is being renovated and seven square feet of wall is opened...
That was Alan.
That was Alan? Sorry, I forgot who it was. That, that could be written a little larger to fifteen square feet.
Yeah, I was gonna go even beyond that and say that in, in, in this scenario, if I have an old house, and alls I want to do is tear the sheet rock down enough to insulate the walls and put the sheet rock back up, now I have to pay for sprinkler system.
If you were doing the whole house?
And I, and I, and I guess I, to me, I don't know. I, I'm all about fire safety, but I, I, I kind of don't understand. If you haven't really changed the configuration of the house, if you haven't changed openings, or the number of rooms, or the exiting conditions, or any of those things, huh? I, I don't know. It, it seems, I love the idea of trying to get people to sprinkle their homes, but I also feel like there's something potentially out of whack.
You're not tearing down the wall. You said you're just going to insulate.
I just want to take the sheet rock down, insulate it, and make my house more, better for the world, presumably. And now I have to sprinkler it. And I guess I feel like that doesn't seem, there's something not right there. I don't...
What if you want to take out a wall between the kitchen and the dining room to open it up, like most, most people are doing these days?
It still gets back to the fifty percent. What Rob suggested would trigger the, if you did the whole house, stuck the sheet rock down in every room, that's a lot to do, by the way. But anyway, if you did it that way, there might be another way to do it that's a little easier than that. But anyway, not to get into that, but you're right. That would trigger sprinkling, I think. What, taking a partition down between the two would affect those two rooms, and it, they would not add up to fifty percent of the house being.
But ironically, you could argue that that's a worse condition, that a fire might spread more quickly from the kitchen to the living room because you now opened up a wall that might have returned the fire. So I don't...
You haven't changed the configuration.
I mean, I realize we're on a slippery slope here because you start making a phonebook full of conditions where you do or do not have to sprinkler. So I know we don't want to do that. But I don't know, I, I'm not completely, and I'm not completely, I don't quite get it.
I think the residence, one of the points of the residence was that it might want to be a sliding scale because it penalizes people who have a small, who have smaller homes. And they, you know, fifty percent adds up very quickly, whereas you have a, you know, five or six thousand square foot home, you put another room on it, you know, you, you don't have to sprinkler. Or you put another room on a smaller home.
It's an interesting...
I would think, this is one of the things that we don't have to resolve to get back to the Board of Trustees. It wasn't one of the initial...
Right. So, so before we get into the discussion, just for the sake of the public, I want to just speak, the idea now is that you're hoping we'll have enough of a discussion so you can write another version of the memo that would presumably be posted in time, advance time for the public to read it and absorb it, with the intention that we would have a public hearing?
No, the...
The next time around?
Board of Trustees would hold the public hearing. We would make a recommendation, but...
At the next meeting, we would make the recommendation and submit it as it is.
But what we've done in the past, it's subject to the chairman's call, is to allow the public to opine on the matters, but it's not a public hearing. We're a recommending body in this case.
Well, it seems like, given, it's up to, I, I don't want to speak for the chair. You should...
Why change?
No. I mean, you were...
No, the answer very simply is that, yes, the things we talk about tonight, we haven't heard yet from the, the, the audience yet.
Or they haven't had a chance to see whatever the doctor, because we're not actually...
They already have comments. Don't worry.
Because, because you're not expecting, we're not voting on anything tonight.
Nothing.
No, not tonight. It's gotta be altered. But I have a question. This whole issue about the fire issue, which to me is extremely important because of safety, what does the state say about taking, exactly repeating what Rob just said?
For, for sprinklers, it's just new construction.
It's just new construction.
New construction.
Yeah. The idea of this five, seven, seven square feet to fifteen square feet was the idea that if you go into a room that's four hundred square feet, and you take a wall apart to run a new pipe, new wires, new something...
Well, you then is open the wall or move the wall?
Just open that portion of the wall.
You just open the wall?
Well, you've just opened the wall to work on one section. You're gonna put something in the wall, or you have to get wiring, or piping, or whatever.
Gotcha. Or insulation, or whatever.
Or whatever you have to do. That four hundred square foot room is not counted as part of the fifty percent, because you've only touched a small portion of the room. Where someone knows, you're just doing a little section, you shouldn't be penalized because the room's four hundred square feet, you're only touching a little tiny piece on the wall. So that, that's the idea, the difference between, if somebody did seven square feet, but if you have fourteen inches opening between raptors, sixteen on center, and it's eight feet tall, you've already hit seven.
Yes. Just one panel.
So that's a little short. You're right there, right away. So now the whole room gets counted. So we were opting to bump that up to fifteen square feet. Some people have taller walls. They may have eleven or twelve-foot entry that they want to put one bay through. That was the idea.
And that hits the fifteen?
That, that would hit the fifteen. That was the premise between seven and fifteen.
But this is our code, which is more stringent?
More stringent, and it has been approved by, uh, New York State Code Council for us to be more stringent.
Are we the only one in the state?
No, not at all. There's a number of people that are.
That are ready, similar to that, going to fifteen square feet?
Yep.
Okay. That, as you said, Dwight, that was not part of the original discussion.
Yeah, and it's the kind of item that we do not need to make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees on. If we don't, if we, if there's a ton of research that's needed on it to figure out the best way to do it, then please, let's set that one aside, because there are some...
If we could, because I think you're right. That's, to me, that's outside the realm of the planning board. That goes into the insurance part, the state code part. There's a whole bunch of other people involved in that, not the planning board.
So do you want to march back to, I mean, do you want, what do you need in order to prepare the next version?
I thought, let's start with item two, and then see if we get, we'll get, I think, some feedback from folks beside the board. But from the board, too, that item two is that the AHRB be advisory in the five districts and for properties greater than one acre as the planning board is advisory to the Board of Trustees, and that the language should exactly mirror the occasions on which the Board of Trustees gets final approval.
Right. And we're not trying to clarify at this moment the things we talked about earlier about the sequence of referrals, right? About whether or not, this is strictly about whether or not they're advisory the same way we are. It's not about this issue of whether or not we're referring to them, and then they give their advice to us, or whether or not we each submit separate recommend, I mean, I guess we wouldn't, certainly wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, but I felt, I felt strongly about that.
So, but at the moment, all you're looking for is our kind of agreement that the, that the, that the AHRB would be advisory to the Board of Trustees the same way we are in those districts?
Yes.
Not advisory to the planning board, as Rob brought up before. It takes place in Hastings.
That's a very functional way to work. Right now, we have a, but that isn't what the question is in front of us, I guess.
Right. The question in front of us is just whether or not...
Because in Hastings, the planning board is the final deciding body. So, so this would be similar to that, except it's a different board.
But in Hastings also, the BOT is not involved, except in certain...
At the very edge, right?
So, for special sites.
Yeah, so.
No, in certain sites, not either.
Hastings on Hudson, that's nothing. The Board of Trustees never, except for, except for cluster housing in large sites.
In Irvington, nothing either.
You guys get paid too much money not to do anything.
So, so I don't know how you all feel. I mean, I personally think we need to do this to make it rational, but I, but I...
Make it more rational.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with that.
Or have it least un-rational.
Yeah.
Less un...
Less rational.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I understand your argument about the workflow and making it consistent. At the same time, I think more checks and balances is better. So if you were to ask me to vote on this, I would say no.
But what would you offer, and, and what would be, what would be the, the process? Because this is not about flow. This is not about flow. This is about...
No, it is. It is. It's about who, who advises who, and...
No, no, but we're not resolving the flow issue here. We're resolving the jur, the power, the, the, the nature of what each, the role, the jurisdiction of what the board is. Those are two different things.
Well, my, you understand what my objection is? My objection is that you have elected officials making the entire decision here, and you don't have a check and balance of, let's say, professionals in that field also being a part of that final decision-making process.
It's advisory.
But it would not make sense. But it would not make sense, you know?
But that's the way it's been going. I mean...
That, that's a different problem. I mean, that...
That's very different.
Well, that's what it is.
And which also has to get, which also has to get fixed, in my opinion.
I don't think we were asked to look at that.
No, no.
Not yet.
Not yet.
What you said, Alan, was exactly correct, and that is, but you got to get serious about it. And we, we talked about planning a, a architectural board where there's one architect out of seven, okay? That's your professional staff, the review. One architect, where was it, Terry?
A minimum of one.
It's a minimum.
Minimum. But so here, on our board, we have one architect and one engineer.
But it also doesn't make sense that the, the project as a whole has, has to meet a bunch of things that we speak about more than, but not exclusively than the AHRB and the AHRB speaks about, certain things that we don't. That package of things, then finally, if it, I, I'm not excited about the fact that it ultimately goes to the Board of Trustees, but if it does, it needs to, right now, you have a situation which we had recently with one of the buildings, where, where it came here, we made a recommendation to the board. The board approved it, subject to...
Yeah, yeah. But they turned it down.
The, no. I, I actually don't know if they've, have they act as the...
The answer is very often, they just...
Has the AHRB acted on the...
Nineteen.
Which project in Main Street did it, I guess?
No, 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 not a rule. Main Street, seventy-eight?
Yeah.
You talk about seventy-eight Main Street?
Yeah. I think they did.
They backed on that and approved it.
And approved it. Yeah.
They did?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't, I don't know.
No, I think, I think we're trying to solve the problem that now the Board of Trustees approves it, and then it goes to the HRP.
Which should, yeah.
To me, that's the, the inconsistency.
Let both boards advise.
The Board of Trustees, if they are gonna have the, like, they should have the collective intelligence, such as it is, from both, synthesized by both boards and given to them, in one way or the other. It shouldn't be, they shouldn't be looking at half, something from one...
Not another bite at the apple. Let's make the, both boards make a decision.
I mean, to me, I think that's what we can recommend now, and we can deal with the, you know, going toward the Hastings-Irvington model next.
Okay. But I think it's also important, and I like this issue about time restraints, not to drag it out, that on and on and on and on, and that's what your item number four is.
Well, let's do three. If we're gonna do this in order, is that right?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Chairman, do you want to let folks that have come here tonight?
Yeah, we will. I just wanted to make sure that we understand that number four.
Sort of item by item? I don't know if that makes sense to a certain degree, because they don't have this sheet in front of them. Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
Well, okay. So let, let's pick up. You're, you're gonna comment on what, Mr. Woodhouse?
Good evening. Neil Whitehouse, twenty-six Hatch Terrace. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I asked a question?
Oh, well, this is all the point that's just been raised in terms of process. First of all, to say thank you, Rob, for the work. I think looking at municipalities, other municipalities, what they're doing is, is a very good part of the process.
Oh, let me, let me say, I mentioned this earlier before the meeting started. I'd like to have a limit of how long people speak. Make it five minutes.
I'll really try. I'll really try. But I think that's part of the issue here. The issue here is that what has happened was that massive sweeping changes were tried to be shoved through by the administration without the information being made available to the public. If you had not stopped the process, Mr. Chairman, and said, "Let's, let's make a draft of this original proposal available to the public," it would have been adopted now. And it would be a disaster. It would have been through the Board of Trustees by now. It was you, you did that in December, so thank you for that. Now, what we've got to make sure is, no matter what instructions the consultants may have been given, no matter what the village attorney is trying to push through, the fact is...
Nobody's pushing, you're using a lot of words that are, they're not being pushed.
I know, I know. But this is a, the thing that I'm trying to be just straight to the point and blunt, because we don't have time, is that we cannot have, again, a situation where, but for the grace of God, this all gets shoved through without proper public review and appropriate time to review it. Anything that is put forward now, anything, needs to be put up, and we have a month to go through it, because it took a huge amount of work to break down that incompetently drafted document and to make it into something coherent so that you could even work out what the issues are. And assuming it's going to be that kind of document again, we're gonna have to go through the whole process again. And we're gonna need the time to do that. So I, that is point one. Ha, let me get my breath. Point two is that, to use an aircraft analogy, because I'm an aircraft guy, is that, you know, when you, when you want to have an aircraft fly, you get concerned, first of all, by aerodynamics and thrust and controls. These are the basic things you're looking at, because you're looking at basically functional systems. And what we have here, as has, Alan has been talking about, and Stephen, is that we have a dysfunctional system. We have a system that doesn't work. And it's not just about the fact that the Architectural Review Board is hung off the end here. It's not just about the fact... It's not just about the fact that the Board of Trustees do not have all the information in order to make reason and informed decisions. We have a system that is focused on politics, that is focused towards the decisions which should be made by professionals, dealing such as yourselves, dealing with complex issues, professionals dealing with issues of NASA, of, of all of the technical stuff that goes along, should be being made by the boards, as is done by over seventy percent of the municipalities in the state of New York. And the reason why there's this overwhelming decision collectively across the state of New York to get politics out, get the politicians out of it, is because it simply doesn't work well. And I have here a proposal, I would just like to give everybody a copy. Maybe you could.
I'll distribute.
Could you spread them down? I want, I want to. The problem that we're getting into here is to get into the details of what was a poorly conceived, shallowly thought out, and incompetently executed proposal, which is what it was. Let's call facts, facts. This was the, the, the thing that was from December fourth. This was the December fourth thing. It was, it was inept. It was shallow, it was thoughtless, and it was incompetent. And so to try and follow through on that and say, let's see what we can cobble together on this, the underlying thing is the problem of the structure. Now, what I've written here is a proposal, and this proposal, um, I'll go through it as quickly as I can. It's one page. Proposed Reform of Dobbs Ferry Development Applications Process. The development approval, approval process in Dobbs Ferry is fundamentally flawed because of its illogical and inefficient structure. The current structure moves an application from the planning board, then to the Board of Trustees, and to the Architectural Review Board. The planning board does not have decisional power, but rather is advisory to the Board of Trustees, making this a politically focused process. The AHRB, which has decisional power, is compromised by the Board of Trustees' approval occurring before its review. Currently, the Board of Trustees decides on applications without all the necessary views having been performed. This is completely illogical and results in a poor process for applicants, unnecessary cost to applicants, unnecessary work for board members, and is burdensome for the public to follow. And just as an aside, the process of noticing is pathetic and has to improve. Having the process focused on elected officials brings politics into the process, which the great majority of municipalities, over seventy percent, have recognized is highly undesirable. The Development's Applications Process needs to be changed along these lines. Applicants will go concurrently to the AHRB and the Planning Board, both of which have independent authority to approve, to deny, approve or deny an application. Routine formal informal communications of the board is critically important. The approval sequence would be broadly, the AHRB broadly would say, this kind of structure could work in this kind of setting. And the Planning Board would say broadly that, yes, we'd then have the, uh, then it will go to the Plannings Board for all of the technical engineering and all the other stuff that you gentlemen do. Then, if and only if both boards approve to the Board of Trustees for the formality of their approval, a stamp, not a decision on their part, BOT would, will not have the authority to arbitrarily overturn AHRB or Planning Board approvals, unless there are concerns for the public safety and health.
You're going over the five minutes, but I'm going to make a general statement. We all have a copy of this.
Okay, well, I've just a little.
It will be in the minutes.
Please, please bear with me, just a little bit. Unless these concerns for public safety and health, which concerns outside the scope of the AHRB and Planning Board considerations, to do otherwise makes the applicant subject to political considerations, which is the opposite of what is needed for a good outcome for the village. If denied an appeal, the applicant will go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. By applicants submitting to both AHRB and Planning Board at the beginning of the process, even in a basic outline form, but with sufficient detail that there's no question about what is being applied for, for example, a, uh, two townhouses or something, will ease the process for applicants and the boards. The AHRB would vote first. First, I ask that members of the Planning Board, and I want to put this in the record for the AHRB as well, and members of the A, AHRB express their individual support for this reform of the Development Approvals Process. This is what, in parliamentary terms, we call a vote of conscience, because the bottom line is that the way things are structured, with the mayor and the village attorney and putting whatever pressure on that they want to put on to have outcomes from the boards that they want to see, it is highly improbable that you're going to see a board turn around and say, you should give up your power. But I believe that there are more than a majority of individuals on the boards who would see that as a very constructive and positive step. And so I'll stop there, thank you.
Great, thank you. This will be part of the minutes. Is there someone else to speak?
To this, to this one bullet point, right? So can we just return to your agenda? So you're.
Just one minute, Mavis.
Just we, there is an issue that isn't the issue on the table. There's an issue of the Board of Trustees having final approval over a series of zones. And what we were asked to do in, from the, a referral from the Board of Trustees and, and from the committee that, that Trustee Kainingburg put together was to look at ways in which to improve process, and some of what Neil has said in here is quite, quite useful. I, I do think quite often, Brian, the applications don't, the AHRB doesn't wait until the planning board is done to work. So oftentimes, they're, but the coordination between the two, the application getting tracked properly through the things is certainly something that, that we should be doing.
There's a lot more breaking in that communication line. It's not a straight line.
But given that the Board of Trustees, at this point, and there's no, uh, not an issue in front of this board right at this point, or there's been some discussion, is, would it make more sense to have both boards advisory? And Neil was using a different term, approval authority, subject to ratification, I guess might be the term I would use, by the Board of Trustees. It's not a crazy idea to do that, I'm just saying, that wasn't exa- that's a little twist on what we were talking about, not, not a, but to have, uh, just giving my opinion for once, to have, uh, the lead agency, which in the cases where we get these five zones, is most often going to be the, um, Board of Trustees, as it currently is, to be the lead agent and then have a, a board, Planning Board, or the Architecture and Historic Review Board, outside of that, uh, window, able to make a subsequent decision that might contravene the findings under secret that the lead agent made and the approvals that it granted.
That's.
Doesn't, isn't a good process. Let's put it that way. I think we could agree that that wouldn't be a desirable process. How to work around it is, I think Neil's given some.
Mr. Woodhouse, Mr. Woodhouse, Mr. Woodhouse, Mr. Woodhouse, we're trying to keep some routine here, okay? Thank you, Neil. But also, I think what you brought up is the issue, and it's a very important issue, is you're taking away a lot of the rights or what, the responsibilities of the Board of Trustees.
Absolutely.
Who are elected officials.
Absolutely.
These are our, the villages' representatives.
Absolutely.
What we see in this group here, and the most we've ever had, let's say, is a hundred people here. We have almost eleven thousand in the village. So we have to not just think of the hundred that show up, or the couple hundred that participate, but the other ten thousand who don't, and their participation is through the political system. As much as you dislike it, the political system happens to be what we have. As your dear friend, Mr. Churchill, said, democracy is the wor- what is it? The, the worst and the best. We're stuck with it. No, I'm, I'm not looking for a response, other than we have elected officials who represent, they're representatives of the village. Uh, Mavis, you are going to speak. Please, five minutes. If you want to speak three, it's okay.
Much shorter than that. Um, I was so curious to.
Your name and address and all.
Mavis Kane. Well, you called me by name.
That's all right. I did call lots of names.
One, three, four South Lawn Avenue, Dobbs Ferry. Um, I was fascinated with the exploration you did of Hastings and Irvington. So this isn't organizational, this is just a few questions about the way Hastings, uh, organizes their review process. You know, the fourth story has bothered me for months, you all know that. The fourth story is at sixty-eight and seventy-eight. What are the regulations in Hastings about four stories in the downtown area? Do they have also what we have verbally, three, three stories, but it's okay to have four? I'm just curious to know that.
Let's look it up. Go on your website. I didn't look that up. That's a good question.
You were looking for the overall picture.
I was looking for the process things.
Specifics like that.
Check it out. I don't, I actually don't know.
Because we have, um, friends of the old coat neck, but on both that board and on Irvington, and I could ask them, but, but those are things, um, that are specifically bothersome to us. And of course, I also feel what Mr. Hunter said, that we should have more architects on the Architecture Review Board. I just think it's strange that people who don't really, architecture is such a complicated thing, and I know, because my son is one. And when he went through those nine exams to get the state license, it was horrible. It was huge. So people who haven't been through that, making architecture decisions seems to me a little bit off the sensible way of looking at it.
I'm sure Neil told you to make that speech.
No, 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 he didn't. I just happen to have an architect son, that's all. He was, once he went independent, he was asked off the board, which, you know, didn't make his opinion less valid, but just meant that he was running his own business here. So, uh, those are things that have bothered me, mostly the four stories. I'd love to know what Irvington said. I do drive around a lot. I mean, I'm on the Aqueduct all the time, so I'm constantly looking to.
You're driving on the Aqueduct?
What?
You said you were driving on the Aqueduct?
No, not driving. I drive around a lot because of my Aqueduct work. I'm trying to be brief, because you're allowing me a short amount of time, but I'm constantly looking to see if other villages have four stories. Drove through Tarrytown, day before yesterday, no four stories, at least that I could see as I wheezed by. So I'm curious to know what those other two villages feel about the four stories.
Look into.
Look it up, and you can tell us next time.
And by the way, I think everyone should understand, what we're proposing here is a process. There's a lot of issues that have to break into that process. No, good, thank you. Sir.
Mike Marrow, thirty-two Walnut Street. I've been here before, as you probably remember. Couple of quick comments, uh, on the process. I like the idea of following the other villages and having the approval at the AHRB and the Planning Board where the, where the expertise resides, and potentially having a Board of Trustees as a final appeal option, so at least they're on the hook politically for overturning anything that the professional boards approve or decline. Another process issue, um, other than, you know, to Neil's point, it's scary that some projects appear to be pre-approved politically before they ever show up at the boards. But public hearings, um, talking about the time and notification should also specify in the code when the timely filing of the requests have to be made to be discussed publicly at the boards. Today is a good example, because at two o'clock, we finally had one of the items pulled, because there was no public information on it. It took until then for people to be advised that it wasn't showing up.
Pulled, the architect pulled it.
There, it's still on the website.
The answer is it came in.
The schedule is still publicly saying that thirty-three Main is on the agenda.
I agree with you, but if you have.
So nobody has any information that it's not right, so.
It needs to be, to be referred again.
Right.
Whether they show up or not.
It will continue, but, but again, to the same point of requiring that people who are applying for things show up over and over and over again, ad infinitum.
Yes.
To address these things, the public shouldn't have to do that just because they decide to show up or not, or submit documents on the days that they've requested to be scheduled.
During the year, there might be five or six, but board members have to show up also.
All I'm going to say on that, um, as far as the fire code correction, the state code does have code for existing buildings and structures. And you didn't have the reference last time, because nobody kept copies of the, of the sheets. I'll provide another copy tonight.
Steph, could you give that to the building department, okay? Because we're not going to review that point.
Well, you guys are the ones that are recommending the code.
That was an add on, that was added to the.
Okay, now, there's a few problems here, obviously, because you guys are recommending an approval of these changes.
Process.
Well, the code?
No, he's talking specifically about these recommendations.
Yeah, you're talking about the recommendation of the fire issues.
Right. Is the, is the planning board approving that, or recommending to the Board of Trustees?
Approving that portion?
It'll be part of the recommendation, I suppose.
I mean, I think some of you had some good ideas on.
I did not think it was going to be included.
Thinking about that, but let me.
Is that part of our recommendation?
We were thinking that, uh, it was discussed, but probably would not be included. Wasn't, wasn't forwarded from the Trustees Kainingburg Committee, and we're trying to focus down on what we can get consensus on, and where we have enough information. And the fire code issues that came up, uh, can be put off.
I was, I thought it was being put off, okay? So I'm agreeing with Al. That, that whole issue.
No changes, we're not going to.
I would like to get a lot more information. You said you have more information.
I do have information.
Okay, that's fine.
And some of the issues have already been brought up and recognized, and, you know, for example, the, the, kind of, you know, other than the fact that this is already in the state code for residential requirements, both for sprinklers and for hardwired smoke detectors, and under what circumstances those are required, normally just designating instances where, where there are third floors in residential construction, where there isn't the same sort of easy egress of jumping on the second floor window.
Then we have a code enforcement officer that reviews that.
But that's there, right? So it's.
Not the planning board. I would not want us to.
I'm just saying, this stuff is already in the law, so the idea that we have to make new laws to usurp the state laws, especially when the state law was put in place to not have scattered building codes. You know, I think, to some extent, we're discussing this as haggling over a solution to a specific problem that we haven't identified, right? Because what is the safety issue, right? And why is it overriding all of these other economic issues for every, every house that was built prior to nineteen eighty-four that doesn't have sprinklers? I mean, to some of your point, we're not even just talking about insulation. What if your plaster ceilings are falling down? You can't replace those without having the whole house be sprinkler, right? What, are you supposed to put sheet rock underneath to hold it up, right?
You're bringing up points that I wouldn't even get involved in tonight, because I think you're absolutely correct that.
Some of this is.
We should not be doing this.
Nobody is thinking about this when they're, when they're making these rules, so that's something that, before you get there.
I would strongly recommend we do not include this in.
Make sure you've got the reasons.
Yes, and I don't think it should even be in front of this board.
Okay, well.
Good, thank you.
Just in case you're thinking about it.
I'll try not to. Do you have a blank sheet? I'll take that one.
Well, you weren't here the last night, so you didn't get to hear it.
Oh, no, no.
Unless you were watching the video.
I watched the rerun, watched the rerun. You look great. Okay, and this is, okay, this is just fine, thank you. Are you through? You are, thank you. You wish to speak?
Very fast. Peggy Bizard, twelve Chestnut Street. Just a few points. AHRB has an H in it. Why don't you have someone from the Historic Society on that board? Maybe one of the trustees.
Excuse me, we're not on the board. Talk to the trustees.
Well, I'm talking to you because here we are. The other thing is views, view analysis. On the last two projects that were approved on Main Street, the view analysis was done in the summertime, when the trees were full of leaves, you couldn't see the view. If you go, if you could walk down the Aqueduct now, you would see there are breathtaking views that you're going to lose when these two buildings get built in this massive size that you have approved. The other thing I want to agree with Neil about is that the mayor and the Board of Trustees are in place by popularity contest. That's how they get where they are. It's a popularity contest. You people are here because you're of a certain type of professional.
You're telling us we're not popular? Is that what you're saying?
Well, some of you are, but, um. We need to think about that. You need to think about that. I mean, do you want people who are in office because they are popular to be making these, that's seven people, right? They're making these decisions for ten thousand people.
Are we talking about Congress, or are we talking about Dobbs Ferry?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. You, you, can I have somebody else speak? You haven't, he hasn't spoken yet. No, please, Neil. Can I have somebody else speak? He hasn't spoken yet. No, please, Neil.
Bruce Richards, 153 Main. I think this has to do with process, especially if the BOT is gonna, you know, be the lead agency or whoever. Is it possible to require the applicant to come up with a CAD design presentation as opposed to a flat, only showing flat elevations of their projects? Because if you're not able to read blueprints well, you can show me an SUV at the grill, but I don't know how long that SUV is.
So you want a different process of presentation?
Yes, because I think it would help the applicant. I think it would help everybody, that's all.
I agree, there's many people that cannot read drawings.
Well, I just think if we're gonna be talking about massing.
No, no, some, and you're agreeing, some of the applicants have come in with the three-dimensional, beautiful presentations, and people can understand that much better. We'll think, that's an item.
I just think.
We should think, we should do that. It costs more, it does.
Well, but it's higher money.
You have to understand, I'm not arguing, other than if someone is gonna come in with a very simple addition, and we're requiring them to spend a lot more money on a CAD, three-dimensional.
It can be a project of a certain size, beyond a certain size.
That's it, thank you.
Even the way the code is written now, the, there's a list of things, I believe, there's a list of things that they're required to submit, but then there's a paragraph at the end that says, "And anything else that the board feels they need to see to make an intelligent decision."
With a recent example, 19 Livingston, I've yet to see a 3D. I've always just seen these frontals. And by the fact that they're now diagonal from one another, which, I mean, I'm not getting, I mean, I used to.
I agree, maybe that's a place where we would ask.
And it's like, it would benefit their argument, where they're not showing it, because it would.
Benefit the applicant, is what you're saying, in their presentation.
I agree, I'm just saying, we have the right to demand that they do such a thing.
Yes, and we have in the past done that. Anyone else? Please.
Hi, Annalisa Corrales, 12 Livingston Avenue. Question, are we talking right now only about the order of the process and not about the scope of review of each of the boards?
We're about to get to that. We are talking about the scope. It's in the, where's the mass, isn't there?
It gets into the massing five.
Is that what you mean, the massing, or?
Yes, because right now, no board really has massing, except the BOT in the current draft. No, the draft from December. It was, the massing concept was taken away, not only from the AHRB, but also from the Planning Board in the draft from December 4th.
I don't think we're letting that go.
No, I would hope that that gets discussed. That was one, it may have been unintended.
And in fact, the way this is moving is actually empowering both boards to look at anything and everything. It's kind of a way.
We're not gonna divide up the review. You look at 1, 2, 3, and you look at 4, 5, 6. Both boards will look at anything pertaining to the project, and they're supposedly the Architectural Historic Review Board. They'd be looking at those two issues relative to all the items, and we'll be looking at the other ones, including massing. So the answer is no, it was not overlooked.
Okay, and not to take sky exposure plan away from the AHRB either?
The, no, we're about to get.
Are we gonna get to that? Okay, but in terms of process, I very much support the idea of making it more efficient. I completely agree that it's too inefficient to have the AHRB go last, and sometimes many months later. I'd like, I'd like us to be cautious, though, on notification of each of the public hearings, because even if we fix that, you know, that they have concurrent review, it could still happen that you have a public hearing before the Planning Board and a public hearing initiated before the AHRB. It could be a year apart. And what happened in 19 Livingston was you had an AHRB notification, you know, months and months and months and months before the actual most important Planning Board hearing, and I never got a notice about it, and it is very difficult to follow on the website. A lot of times, the agendas are not updated until after it happens or the day of. I think the notification is something that we need to be very cautious before saying only the initial public hearing has to be noticed, unless we really get this process right.
I mean, we could consider, there could be something in a situation where if a certain amount of time goes by, I don't know.
You mean the applicant disappears for six months?
Right, that like, if, right, if there, if the timeframe between.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just in response to her.
We don't wanna have them do that. Every month, they're gonna send out a series of return receipt notices.
No, no, but.
I mean, that's foolish.
No, but there might be.
Maybe the first meeting before each board, and then also if there's a.
The first meeting, the first public meeting of each board.
I mean, what we talked about before was having an update on the website of where projects are, but then somebody, nobody wants to do that. I mean, we can't get anybody to volunteer to do that.
You notice it first for the, when you're on the agenda. When you're taken off the agenda and you come back on, then you usually have to notice again.
Typically, the way other.
It could be, you know, for major projects, there could be, okay, this is where this project is, but somebody's gotta actually, you know, contribute to write that for the website.
No, I could, I could understand that if you have a public hearing, the applicant is there, does a presentation, they're supposed to come back to the next meeting, they're not prepared, and two or three meetings go by, and they don't come back. I could see where there should be an additional notification when they decide to come back four months later. And that's basically what you said a moment ago.
Yes, thank you, yes.
33 Main is a good example, because we didn't know that the applicant wasn't gonna show up until.
I mean, that, till we came in here. We came in here, found the letter.
It only came in this afternoon.
Okay, it came in late this afternoon. But I think at that point, your point is well taken, that especially if there's a period, and you've been notified, you're here, somebody came in here for that particular item. Well, we're gonna say now that the applicant said they're gonna be at the next meeting, or did they? I don't remember now what that letter said.
They did, I think.
March meeting is the next meeting.
So the other thing is, if, you know, if an applicant doesn't show up, we need to make sure we're careful about how we draft the time restraint, so that the applicant can't force the automatic approval by not showing up, by showing up to one meeting.
No, 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 no.
I think we're clear on that. We're gonna get to that. I think we're clear on that.
I like that one. You don't show up for three meetings, it's automatically approved.
That's a good one.
By the way, if some of the people that have been here, if they stayed away for three meetings, I would approve it.
Well, I completely agree. I'm not gonna name any projects in particular, but that's all I have on process.
Great, thank you. Sir?
I'll keep it very short, Pat.
You promise?
In Capewell, 60 La Verge Avenue. To the point earlier made about we elect people, and it's a popularity contest, and that's how they're represented. I grew up in this village, class of '85, and I moved back again with my family three years ago. And when I came back and started to reengage as to what was going on, I can't tell you how many people didn't vote. I mean, how many people actually vote for mayor? And how many were on the ballot last time? So the idea that we get an outpouring, and it's not even really a popularity contest, because if one person runs and loses, wow, okay? So, yeah, it's not, so, I mean, the idea that, you know.
You made the evening, yeah.
Excellent, you're not taking this, that's good. You know, so the idea that, you know, you would let people in to represent it, and that's your, it really isn't, okay? They don't, they don't have the expertise. They're not sitting here every night. And I have to say, I appreciate what all of you are doing, because I know it's not easy to sit here. It's not easy sitting out there, you know? And I know you guys are here, you know, very often. How much time you put into it, I can tell by what Mr. Lane did, so. All of that aside, what I wanna talk about is, I'm in commercial real estate, okay, I'm an attorney. I'm mostly leasing, I'm not on the development side, so I'm pro sound development, wherever it might be, okay? But the confusion about an applicant and what he needs to do, that can be fixed in the code, okay? And I'm gonna, as much confusion as there might be, there really isn't. If somebody buys a piece of land, by the time they get to that point, okay? Unless it's some guy who wants to buy, you know, the neighbor's house and knock it down, put a pool in or something like that, they know. If it's been financed, the banks vetted it. They know what they can do there. The only reason they come here and where the controversy happens is because they've looked at that code and say, "It doesn't work for me, I'm going to Plan B," okay? So they come to you already knowing that what they're asking for is in keeping with the code. So if you need to build a little more flexibility into the code, you can do that. But, you know, as an attorney, as I read these things, when I hear the word advisory, you've eliminated it. I don't care how much time you put into it, or the AHRB puts into it, okay? It means nothing. It means I'll look at it if I want to. So if there's nothing in that code that requires or empowers that board, you think you got a problem finding people on the AHRB now? What's gonna happen when they know what they do, falls on deaf ears and doesn't mean anything?
I'm gonna respond to you before you're finished. I've been on the board.
I'm almost finished.
I've been on the board a few years. I've found that through the years, projects, not a one-family house, but bigger projects, when the recommendations went to the Board of Trustees, and very often, as chair, I would go and explain what this was. The Board of Trustees, I would say, most of the time, a large percentage, voted in the same direction that the Planning Board had recommended.
Okay, so then there doesn't seem to be an inherent conflict.
I don't believe so.
Of rendering meaningless.
No.
Both the AHRB and the Planning Board, because that's what he does.
They, they do listen, the advisory, there are points that are brought up by both boards where they may have not seen all of that, because we listened, and as you said, we go out, we see the site. We have many site tours, many site tours, on a Saturday morning, and we go out. So when we come in and make our decision, we make it based on what we've seen.
I understand.
And the Board of Trustees, I would say, very seldom has not agreed with the recommendations.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So it doesn't seem like, I'm not sure what's driving this, other than impatience, and I guess there was a, something was overturned at one point, or was denied by the AHRB after it was approved.
Yes.
And now we're gonna revamp the code. We're not revamping the code.
Change it so that it sounds like it's a more logical approach, and the final answer is the Board of Trustees, period, end of story, rather than playing games.
And I had heard that the mayor had said, "This isn't about eliminating the AHRB, it's about improving the process." And I agree with that, but the solution, okay? It makes no connection with what the stated goal is, because again, if it's advisory, they may listen, they may not. The point is, you're gonna have three people, maybe four, who are gonna make the decision, who aren't gonna put in the time that you've put in, who don't have the expertise, okay? They're gonna make the decision on projects in the most precious and shared areas of the village. You're taking the waterfront, you're taking Cedar down to Main, okay? And you're putting that in the hand of three people who nobody runs against, okay? And you're saying, "It doesn't really matter how much you've looked at it, or if you've looked at it. You guys could put together volumes, you could put together all the PowerPoints you want, renderings or whatnot." In the end, there's no control in place, and the purpose of a code, whether it's at the congressional, the federal level, or the local level, is to insulate a decision-making process from political influence, okay? That's really a valuable part of a code. Put it in the hands of people who know what they're doing.
So your suggestion then is cut out the word advisory and take that responsibility away from, or power, whatever term you wanna use, from the Board of Trustees? We have it already. The Planning Board has it already on subdivisions, on subdivisions. No, I'm giving you an example. I'm agreeing. Don't argue, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, all right. I'll stop it, yes.
Subdivision, subdivision approval ends with the Planning Board.
Okay, so in that context, is.
Never goes to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, the projects that have been turned down, let's say the one on, is it Livingston over here? What was the process there?
That is not a subdivision. That was site planning.
Oh, okay.
Site planning is a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
33 Main Street is another project.
In certain zones.
Okay, 33 Main Street's another project, okay? That's not a subdivision?
No, subdivision means dividing land.
Okay, right now, right now.
I'll explain it to you.
Right now, you have a system where the AHRB would have to approve it, putting aside the order, and the Planning Board would have to approve it, okay? And the Board of Trustees also has to approve it?
They're both advisory to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, is that the proposal you're saying?
That's the way it is now.
Yes.
This board is advisory. This board is advisory.
Okay, so all you're doing is.
They're making more efficient advisory.
You should change that, yeah. You really should change that. You should have folks who are gonna give the time to understand.
You wanna take this, the Board of Trustees, I'm sure, deep down, would say, "Great, you take it, we don't want it." I don't wanna look at David.
I'm willing to take that back. I'm willing to take that back. But my point is, the decision should be in the hands of folks who have a foundation of knowledge of what it means, massing.
You're trying to compliment the Planning Board.
No, but I. I was actually talking about the AHRB, but Planning Board, well, okay. The point is, however many architects, one's better than none. And we're not Tarrytown, so you could do whatever you want. If you want three on there, make sure there's three. But the point is, it, this decision-making should be, I've said what I wanna say.
Yeah, no, I heard, yeah.
Two very quick things. On the 3D stuff, the renderings and stuff, most of these guys, especially if they're getting funding either from a bank or for private, they're doing it anyway.
Yes.
And you should be able to post those on the website and have a link. And people can just download them, like you did with, yeah, Chancery Street, whatever it is. I've been gone for a while, so I don't, the modern Norman, you know, the Norman place you're down, but. And the thing about the email, I know there was a concern last time about people giving emails or not. There's a lot of sites out there, companies do it all the time, where you can go onto the website, put in your email address, click off the five or six things you wanna get, and it's totally seamless. It's a little email portal on there, and the applicant doesn't have to do anything, okay? You just let people know it's out there, tell them, you can send out a village email, go to the site. If you wanna get for either a particular project or for anything the Planning Board does, whoever does your website can put that portal on there. It's not gonna cost anything. So, and that will address the notification thing as well.
I totally agree. I think that there's certain obligations of the village residents to do something on their own, rather than being fed.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Well, they have to know that they need to do something.
The answer very simply, check the, look, the mayor has been very, very systematic on identifying storm closings, road closings, issues. I look at it. I mean, that's, it's important, and the mayor, the mayor's doing an excellent job on that. We as residents have an obligation, take a look at the village, the village website.
Folks will much easier check their email every day, and if they get that update, when it's there. And there's nothing that the clerk has to do, the mayor, the board, nobody has to do. It's just another link on the website.
But then all the residents have to come into the village and say, "Here's my web, my email address."
You can do it on your phone. You take your phone out, you go to Dobbs Ferry.
I'm not arguing, I'm saying, but something has to be done by the village residents giving the village, the village, the email address.
Yeah, they'll just go onto the website. You don't have to go house to house knocking. You, you, yeah, you were telling them that they're on the website. Okay, unless they're on sprinklers, I know whether it's gonna be on or not, you're actually gonna do more harm, because the cost of sprinkling, you know, a two-level house, if it has a finished basement, is gonna be prohibitive. People won't do repairs they should. I mean, what happens if somebody has a pipe that burst, and they don't know where it is, and they gotta open up different parts of the wall, okay? Or electrical, they think there's a problem, it's dated electrical, they wanna update it. They're not gonna do it, because, as you mentioned, you wanna replace some sheet rock, you wanna open an area between a kitchen and a dining room, which actually might be more safe, because it's better egress, okay? People aren't gonna do it if they gotta sprinkle the entire house. So to go beyond what the state code requires.
This, that are out of our expertise, but very simply, the code enforcement officer knows what the state.
People might not have the money to make the repair, let alone sprinkling the whole house.
No argument.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Anyone else to speak? Mr. Woodhouse, let other people.
Whitehouse.
Whitehouse, Whitehouse, Woodhouse, I would.
Whiteout.
Stone.
My name is Judith Spikes, and I'm the five-race test. I appreciate the clarifications that you gentlemen have made tonight of certain recommendations in the December 4th, 2014 draft of the proposed changes to the code, and that is sincere. But that said, I have to bring to your attention the fact that the public raised objections to 12 of the 19 recommendations in that first draft and proposed changes. So we look forward to hearing what other, what your thinking is on some of the other points, recommendations that were not, excuse me, that were not brought up at this meeting. I do have questions, which I will not ask tonight. I'll probably bring them to Mr. Cook. I do have questions, which I will not ask tonight, I'll probably bring them to Mr. Cook, about the sprinklers, and someone else about the time limit, the time limits, on the time that the H R B has to render a decision.
You want some water?
I doubt that it will help, but thank you for offering. And finally, I have some concerns about, I've been told, I don't know this is an absolute fact, but I've been told that seventy percent of the surrounding municipalities do not involve their Boards of Trustees, Mayor and Boards of Trustees, in these land use decisions. And if they manage to do it, it seems that we might manage to do it too, and it's something we could consider without just moving it out. So I return to where I was at the January eighth Planning Board meeting, the public hearing. I respectfully ask you if the passages are intended to mean what they might appear to mean. I refer to the passages in the first draft dated December fourth, twenty fourteen. I also ask why the Planning Board desires these changes, I've heard some answers to some of that tonight, thank you. What is the rationale, who benefits, who loses? And finally, should proposed changes of this scope and magnitude in land use policies, procedures, and powers be subject to a vote of referendum? Thank you.
Patty? You're yielding to Neil?
Twenty-six hatch stars. On the point of Secura lead possession, I'm not an expert on this, but it just occurs to me, if seventy percent of the municipalities in New York State manage to keep political influence out of the process, how does the Secura process function for seventy percent of the municipalities in the state of New York? I would assume that there is some manner that we can determine that actually it does work.
It sounds fascinating.
It sounds logical, right? And I would like to support Steve's point on the M D R one districts. I think that until we can sort out a reasonable thing, I think it's not a matter of just changing a thing in an appendix versus in a table versus here and there. It's a matter of looking at it holistically for these, each of these M D R one districts, and saying, what actually makes sense, which I think partly is what Steve was saying. There is this conflict within it, and it is, you know, surely, everybody knows that when a developer comes in, they want to build the maximum that they can. And they're going to go into the code, their lawyers will go into their code, and they will find any anomalies in the code, and they will exploit them to the maximum of their benefit, in hoping that Mr. Chairman says, well, you know, we don't wanna have to go in front of a judge on this. Well, you know, that's part of what they depend upon doing. So if we're afraid of getting sued, then what we need to do is straighten out the code so that we minimize the possibility of getting sued.
Very good. I think that's, that last point was extremely important.
I just have a few things to say, I think...
You gotta say your name, even though you sacked it.
Not Kane, sorry. I feel like everyone knows. Yeah, I was at the roundtable discussion, and I think it all...
You have to say your name.
I did.
Neil, Neil, you're a more out person like that, you sitting up here.
But anyway, I was at the roundtable discussion, I guess the meeting before that, and I'm still here tonight. And I'd say I was very pleased, because I think a lot of our concerns were spoken to. You know, this idea of taking powers away from the Architectural Review Board in terms of, so pining about massing, was sort of wrong-headed, and I think a lot of what you're talking about here is really strengthening the process. So I think all that is very positive. It does, I think a lot of people have a question as to why these things were proposed in the first place. Why take away these powers from the Architectural Review Board? And quite frankly, it's very troubling, you know, that the Board of Trustees, or whoever, felt it necessary to pull that away, because they're providing such a vital service to the community. And they do a great job, and you guys do a great job. So I wanted to say that, and you did get a letter, I wrote a letter, and I wrote a lot of opinions on a lot of these things, I won't go into it, but a few things just came up tonight. The forty-five day wait issue is, concerns me, just 'cause you can imagine a scenario where someone will say, forty-five days is up, even though there are, there are provisions in the code stating situations where the clock will continue beyond forty-five days for various reasons, not enough information and so forth. But I think you have to be very cautious about the forty-five day clock, because I can imagine an applicant coming up and saying, that's not true, I gave you the information you needed, you should, you have to approve me right now, I'm gonna demand it, I'm gonna take legal action. Very, you have to be very careful about that, and the other thing is, I think, small point, but I think there should be one exception for not having a quorum, at least one. You shouldn't say, if there's a quorum, the clock, if there is not a quorum met one evening, that the clock continues. Have one, have a provision for one, because there's...
I could never agree to that.
Well, I think it's important, I don't see any reason why not.
I used to come to these board meetings and flew in from another city just for the board meeting, and take a limo back to get back. But the answer is, in order to make a quorum, if somebody comes in and they have a period of time, we're supposed to answer, let's say, forty-five days, sixty days, whatever it is, fixed number. If we can't have a board meeting...
I think you miss one for an application, I think that's a reason. The point is, you have exceptions, and there are reasons why you wouldn't have a quorum, there's weather.
Oh, if we have a storm, of course.
But, but, maybe other reasons as well.
How many board members are on the Architectural Review Board now?
Three.
Three, so...
Right, I think, right, I think maybe the real, right, the real...
That's a slightly different situation.
The real thing is...
There are seven people to...
I know somebody can get you on that.
With here, between five people...
No, I can't, well, that's the other issue I wanna say.
No, well, that's another issue.
That's a special condition.
But that's another thing, just in my notes, since it came up tonight, is that it is reasonable to have people who are, not volunteering, but to have people who are... Be able to work on the board, and I've seen it many times, where people are on the board, and if you have a project, you come around here and you argue your own project to the board. It sounds, you know, you might think the board would be more accepting of something you do. I think, in fact, if you're on the board, and you're an architect, and you're coming around to describe it, you're gonna be very cautious, you're gonna be very careful. The project that you're gonna show to the board, to all the people that you've been working with, is gonna be, you know, very diligently done, and is gonna...
Neil, I prefaced...
All the things that you've talked about on the board for years.
I said this upfront, the architects and the engineers have a sworn duty to do the work in accordance with the code and everything else. And the term I use is...
It's worth revisiting.
We speak to a higher authority, yes.
It's worth revisiting. What else, the notification process, I think, when we had the roundtable, Steve Brosna had brought up the idea of the email notification, and I think there was a little bit of confusion, because someone was saying, well, you can't force them to do it, they're not gonna give it with their email, that's not the point. The point is that you should have the opportunity to be able to give your email
That's it.
and be notified. And it's fine to say that, well, you should check the website, but we're all busy, you forget a meeting's coming up, even though you're concerned about it, doesn't mean you're not concerned about it. It's very reasonable, certainly for the people within the twenty, two-hundred-foot radius, to send out the letter, have a little note on the letter that says, if you're interested in being updated about this on a routinely, routine basis, send in your email. And whether it's the applicant whose responsibility it is...
Perhaps we should have an ad in the newspaper, The Enterprise, who is represented here, where that whole issue about getting onto the village's website and will set up, in some manner, a manner of, a means by which people will get their responses via email. And when that's done, perhaps The Enterprise can have a little article on that, that'd be perfect. Because it's, more and more of us are learning.
No, and the whole conversation about not missing a couple of meetings, and then you don't come, and then you're annoyed.
It wouldn't bother me to have another thirty people here who really know what's going on, or want to know.
And the other thing is, it's been said by numerous applications, I think it's very recent, and I know when I was on the board, we talked many times about the fact that the Board of Trustees has final say that we're, and we were frustrated by it, I know many people were. So, including the chairman. So, I think it's perfectly reasonable that you decide to talk about this, and make, and opine on it, and give an opinion to the Board of Trustees. Perfectly reasonable, and as has been said before, I don't know if, you know, somebody cited seventy percent of town municipalities don't operate the way we do. And I think it's...
Well, right now, I told you, the only one we have, without any further review by the Board of Trustees, is subdivision.
Oh, I know, oh, I know.
And then what you're saying is, expand that.
Yes, expand.
We have residential.
Expand it, yeah. And then the other thing that came up is this sprinkler code. I think it's very reasonable for you to give an opinion on that, it's not rocket science, you don't need a fire inspector to give an opinion on it. You can give an opinion on the sprinkler code, because opening up fifteen square feet of walls is ridiculous, is absurd.
That, now, see, now you're talking, as an architect, and I heard some other comments, and I totally agree that work would not be done because it would cost more to put the sprinkler in. And your comment was that the work should be done, and don't create a machine that makes it difficult to do it.
Yeah, and Robert's point about putting insulation in the walls, I mean, it's just a fifteen, fifteen square feet is, I'm fifteen square feet, you know, I mean, it's ridiculous.
You have a twelve-foot, a ten-foot high ceiling.
But you were saying, expand it from seven feet to fifteen, fifteen is the same difference as seven, it may as well be seven.
Okay, great, thank you.
But you should take out the renovation, a part of it, and just use the New York State Code. I mean, it makes so much sense, it doesn't make sense, there's no, if there's not a problem, you don't need to fix it, there isn't a problem.
I'm sure Mr. Cook will advise us at the next meeting, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, boy, this is a popular program. Sir?
Whitney from Thirteenth Summiters. Just wanna say one thing, to put this in perspective, I mean, I just know all the things, but, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, you wouldn't probably see me here. And I just wanna say that, why do you see all these people here? Because we're seeing what's going on in the village. In the old days, some house, maybe a little bigger than the other house. Now, we have all these controversial projects all over the place, we're running out of real estate, okay? We're starting to notice what's going on in villages. The buildings are getting bigger, taller, wider, blocking our views. Okay, it's not a little house over here on an empty lot anymore, now they're blasting and digging into sides, they're building apartments on top of hills, and so on and so on, that's why we're here, okay? Now, what I wanna say to you, I understand you've got specific items that you're supposed to cover for the Board of Trustees. But obviously, us coming out here and looking at what's going on, we have exposed a lot of flaws in the process. And I see no reason why should you wanna go back to the Board of Trustees and address those little specifics that they ask you, you know, what role should the Architectural Review Board have? But go back and say, wow, you know, we explored the questions you had, but, these people, yeah, who might only be thirty people, but probably represent more than the six hundred people that voted for whoever, for mayor, okay? Came here and said, oh, God, look at this, there's some things really, really wrong with the whole process, it's totally flawed. Board of Trustees will know nothing about buildings and massing, and what's really going to a village, have the ultimate say and say, oh, no, you know, I want it. Maybe they wanna exercise that, but just the point that they have the ability to do that, that's bugging us, okay? You might work with them great, and ninety-nine percent of the time, they agree with you. But that one percent of the time, when it comes to the cluster, with all these things you talk about, you say, no, no, I want that. I want all those hundred homes built on this three-acre lot, I'm joking, but that's what, that's my perception in this village, what's going on. But be bold, go to these guys and say, we have discovered, with the help of the public, that we have a serious issue here. There is a lack of confidence by the public in our elected officials. Why don't you restore that confidence? Give us, give the Architectural Review Board the power, the job, to do what they're supposed to do. It makes absolutely no sense for a political organization to have the final say, and that's really what we're saying here. So be bold and go back and say, yeah, we are expanding on these few points here, but this isn't what we need to do.
But see, here's, here's the problem, the problem is that, because they're probably, we're not pulling the board here, I think there's a general feeling that there's, you know, we might wanna look at this issue about whether the Board of Trustees has the last word. In the meantime, the code is on the books, and we've been asked to try to make some fixes, many of which address problems that the public has legitimately raised, and that we felt the reason that this happened was because long before this public process started, there were things going wrong that had nothing, that were, that we've been, that we need to address. And if we somehow say, well, we're not gonna engage in this process of trying to make the fixes we can now, we can engage in this other process to try to take this power away from the Board of Trustees, and maybe we'll be successful. But in the meantime, over however many months that's gonna happen, people are gonna be coming here, proposing projects, under the old code, doing things that are, don't make sense, either from a process point of view or a content point of view. So, you know, I, it's, I agree that the two issues are joined to some extent, but I feel like we, we need to try to see, at this moment, if we can't fix some of the things that are really wrong. Because in the meantime, until this other thing gets resolved, things are gonna get built in, under this flawed process.
Let me put it simply, we have a duty right now, there was a committee set up. The Chair of the Committee was David, and the objective was, we had members on that committee from all the boards. All the boards were on that committee. What we're doing is talking about the process. What you're bringing up is another subject. That same presentation you made, make to the Board of Trustees.
Absolutely, we will.
Make it to the Board of Trustees. That would be a different route.
But you can't just take part of the code and change it, or go and get the whole process.
I disagree, I disagree, what we're trying to do is improve the process that we have today. What you're proposing is a major change in the whole code.
Well, absolutely, we know, we knew they'd do that, we all know that.
Fine.
In the meantime...
You, and take Neil with you, go to the Board of Trustees. Neil, you can keep, well, I thought you were, I thought you were leaving, I'm sorry. But the objective now is, you're going down a new route, not gonna argue with you on it, it's an issue, as you, somebody is saying seventy percent. I don't know, I don't have the numbers, whatever, if it's one percent, it's an interesting concept. And I'm sure there's certain things that was pointed out, that single home site planning does not go to the Board of Trustees. Final decision is Planning Board, subdivision, final decision, Planning Board. What you're proposing is, expand the final decisions done by the Planning Board, or Architectural Board, whatever board you wanna call it, rather than the Board of Trustees. That's a change in the code.
I agree with what you just said, it's very suspect to me that you can deal with single-family homes, but with a controversial project, it's gonna be, you're not involved.
No, because then it goes to the...
Are you involved, excuse me?
Yes, you have the right word, controversial goes to the Board of Trustees.
But the point is, see, the thing is, is, as a citizen, I expect these things to be placed. I never realized how really, how dysfunctional this thing is here, and really, what the, the way these whole things move on a jet...
Isn't it incredible, and we've been around for a couple hundred years.
Absolutely, but you know what, the point is this, we're here, are now here with this board, we got an Architectural Review Board, we got a Board of Trustees, I mean, the answer, which I get, not from you, maybe from the mayor, I think once you've told me to, you know, get involved and so on and so on, okay? You guys, you have your one little thing, but you don't have to run all to the other boards either. We have to run the three, four, or five different boards. So, yes, we're using you as a conduit to maybe give you more, or things that really may be a little bit outside the scope. But what I was trying to say, and going back, I say, be bold, listen, take that information, and say, hey, you know, I know we asked you to work on these things, and here's some of the recommendations, but this is what we heard from the public, they're really concerned about these issues. And yes, we'll take it up with them also.
And by the way, you should also know, this is being televised, not only do you hear the Planning Board listening to you, but there's a lot of other people listening to you, a trustee is here, I'm sure several other trustees are watching.
Anyway, this is...
Former.
The future Chair of the A R B.
To wrap it up...
We're gonna put him on, we're gonna get him on the Planning Board.
To wrap it up, I do just wanna say, look, besides all the back and forth, I do appreciate what you guys do, okay? And I just wanna let you know.
We're trying to get an increase in pay, and they won't do it, maybe you can make a recommendation.
Remember, we're all Doug's Ferry residents, and I know that, okay, thank you.
Exactly, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Neil?
I request your forbearance, just to say that, so, thank you. First of all, I wanna say, you guys, it's great, this is really, this is democracy in action. And the quote I think you were looking for from Churchill was that, democracy is the worst of all forms of government, bar the rest.
That's it.
Except for the alternative.
Except for all the other alternatives.
Oh, you looked it up, anyway, I just wanna say that, the point of your responsibility, talking to Rob's point, about that, you know, you have... Oh, you looked it up. Anyway, I just want to say that the point of your responsibility, talking to Rob's point about that, you know, you have an obligation, and you were saying have an obligation to respond to this. I think one of the things that came out of our analysis, and if you look at the tape of the work session where you chaired it, the number of times that was said, oh, no, this wasn't part of the committee. Oh, no, this, this was discussed, but it wasn't part of it. Oh, no, that wasn't even discussed. Oh, no, we just added that in. That it, the, the, the specifics of David's committee, what they came up with, when you compare that, as we did, to what was in this first draft of December fourth, there's very, very little similarity there. And I don't think that, quite frankly, that you really have an obligation to respond to things that were made up and brought in that were outside the scope of the, the committee.
A lot of what was said tonight is outside the scope of the committee. You're absolutely correct.
I think the idea was that, that the, we were, well, and David, you, you know, you should say something about what you feel your charge was. But I think the feeling was, if we're gonna go into the code to make a bunch of changes, the idea was certainly to try to capture as much as we could from the committee that David chaired, but it was also an opportunity to fix other things that we think are broken about it and that don't work about it. So I don't, I don't, we weren't told thou shalt only, we, we were trying to make a bunch of fixes to the code. We weren't told, and I don't think it would have been smart to have been told, that the only thing your charge is to just act on the things that came out of this committee. So, it's, huh?
I, I don't think so. The problem about that is just that the, the committee was set up to give credence to the process and that it has been referred back to consistently as being the starting point of, of a process that came out. And, and when, when the village attorney was saying, oh, no, that wasn't even discussed anywhere, we just added it in. It's like, who's running the show? Who's deciding policy? Who's running Dobbs Ferry? And that's really part of the reason why there is such a loss of confidence in the process and in the politicians here in Dobbs Ferry, which is a sad statement, but that's the way it is. And where did it start? It started with, quote, controversial projects. It's nineteen Livingston. You know, the mayor wanted it done, made it very clear he wanted it done and was very upset that it, that it got turned over by the Architectural Review Board and then we got the committee. I mean, so, you know, it, it's no wonder that people are, in the community are responding the way that we're responding to this because this is, this is wrong. This process is wrong. And so, and to come up, if, if what had come out in December fourth had been a coherent, understandable, competent document, then that's one thing. If there had been cost benefit analysis, if there had been policy statements, then people could have read it. Twelfth graders in social studies classes could have studied it and looked at it and understood it. And let me tell you, I'm used to working with very complex documents and it was very hard work trying to make sense out of what was being proposed. And it took a lot of time to do it. And I don't relish the thought of having to do it again, but we will do it again, once, once this is made public. But we get a hearing here and I thank you so much for that. But I have no confidence that we will get a hearing in front of the Board of Trustees. None at all. And I, I think most people here feel the same way. And I think a lot of people in the community feel that way.
You're not proposing a coup of any type, are you?
No, sir. I actually, I actually like democracy. I think it's an ugly process. But I think that you've got to be realistic about who politicians are and what influences they come under. And you've got to be realistic about when you need expertise. And you, as has been said very eloquently, that in the Architectural Review Board process and in the Planning Board process, we are dependent upon the goodwill and hard work and commitment and expertise. You members of the community.
I mean, there's such power here tonight. And we hear there's only three members. We have five plus an alternate. But there's only three members on the Architectural Review Board. That's. No, 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 no. You need, this is a volunteering.
No, sir. With due respect, what has happened is that, and I, I addressed this since January eighth, and, and that the, there were two members of the Planning Board who were told there were no disservices and no longer required. One of them, I understand, got a call from the mayor saying, hey, thanks, but we're going in another direction. That was after twenty-six years of service, how his, he was thanked publicly for his service. The Architectural Review Board, yeah.
You've just, okay, not this board.
No, not this board. No, the ARB.
You missed the call.
I've been waiting for it.
The, the structural problems we're talking about with the Architectural Review Board hanging off the end of the horse.
Which end of the horse?
The wrong end.
Back end.
The back end of the horse. Is the problem with that is that when, when the Architectural Review Board is seen by people who are informed as being under attack and as being, and when you have a proposal like this proposal that came out December fourth that would eviscerate their powers, and it did, it eviscerated their powers, then why would any competent, hardworking person like Nile want to be on the board? So, which is why we need to fix the process. At the very minimum, we need to get the Architectural Review Board at the front end of the process, not the back end of the horse. You should have decisional power. You have all the expertise and experience and ability to have full decisional power. Not to be, I was not suggesting a tweak in any manner, shape whatsoever. The difference between having advisory, being an advisory board and having executive powers is huge. It's black and white.
Neil, I think you, you overdid your time for it.
Indeed, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could I just add a little bit?
Please.
One of the issues that we're grasping, grappling with is both responding to what the ad hoc committee gave to us. We have been charged by the Board of Trustees essentially to take their recommendations and make a recommendation back to the Board of Trustees. So I think we're obligated to do that. I mean, that's when the Board of Trustees sends us.
That was our charge.
That's what our charge is. So then there's other things that have come up that are important. So we're not trying to say, I don't think anybody doesn't think there's other important things. So, there, I think in a way, there's two tasks that we're trying to do. One is to draft the language better than happened at the December meeting, more clear anyway. That would be sent back to the Board of Trustees for them to hold a public hearing and potentially adopt. Most of that would be in response to the ad hoc committee. At the same time, there are a whole host of issues that we were not charged to examine. And I think we would probably owe a memo, kind of summarizing those issues and giving some early thoughts to them.
Before we write the memo, I think there's, and it was a lot brought out tonight and very strong, Neil, you don't have to say it, I'll say it for you, that these other considerations should be reviewed. And then that, along, in other words, not just the Planning Board. I think the Architectural Review Board also should participate so that there's a memo, a joint memo, that would go to the Board of Trustees, saying that we believe there's certain things that perhaps should, and I'm using the terms used tonight, be removed from the political process. That's basically what I've heard tonight from several people. So that, that sort of thing, we have to discuss it. We have, we have not had a discussion on that. And maybe that'll be something that after this is prepared, at the next meeting, the March meeting, we can talk about the finalization of this charge. And then there's some discussion of what we can look to in the future.
With time for us to review, sir?
No, I don't want to give you any time to review because then you get up here and speak.
You're very kind. We'll take, we'll accept your humble offer. Thank you very much.
The, uh, there, there were a couple of technical flaws that shouldn't sit. And that was the height, which was in one section, different from the other. That was the townhouses, which we, I've sort of thought, I mean, Steve has done a great job of really analyzing that at a certain level, but I think more analysis might be needed before there's a hard and fast recommendation on it. So that, those, that townhouse, we would ask to put a moratorium into place, I think, to hold off and give us some time to.
Townhouse within a certain, I, I, I come back to the fact that if I want to build a single, two-family house side by side, I don't think it should fall into the moratorium. That's my personal.
We'll have to make sure that that doesn't happen. But those things, and then the height, there was another, oh, the fact that public hearings are not required. It struck us that even though we always do it, that we, we should clear that up and just require them. And then we heard tonight a suggestion from Nile, I think that maybe a ninety day period and, and application is inactive. Then they have to go back. There's maybe some way, we'd talk with the building department and say, okay, they've had long enough. Uh, the public hearing got opened, they're had, not followed up with things, then to have to renotice.
I don't think it should be ninety. I think at least two meetings. That's sixty days.
Sixty.
Tarrytown is seventy-five days.
Okay. Well, we'll do a little bit of research on that. Maybe we can put that together too. So those items would be added on to what is my vision, anyway, just my opinion and I don't get to vote. I don't even get to vote, but would be added on to responding to trustee Caningsburg's committee. And then, so they would be in a, a language ready to be adopted should the Board of Trustees want to do that. Then these other issues that are coming up that are very important, nobody's saying they're not, about who gets final say, who makes these decisions and other things. That would be in a memo that these need, that there's a recommendation. I think we will have consensus of some items that we think should be forwarded to the Board of Trustees, recommending that they consider forwarding this back to us to work on it.
But that, that's after this one goes out.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's.
Sir, you have something to add to what you said before?
Yes, Mike Merrill, ARB to Walnut. Believe it or not, hasn't come up. But the MDR one discussion, I would just notice from a layman's perspective, what's available on the public site. The two thousand and ten zoning map seems to call the MDR one and MDR two zones exactly the same thing, except for that MDR two includes townhomes. You know, so I think normal people's perspective would be that the row of townhomes was not something that was specifically envisioned, except for maybe in the MDR two zone. Related to your question about what do you call townhomes, you know, the other, the other criteria is it's one to three families. If you've got four of them, obviously, wouldn't that.
We have one, we have single family and then two-family would be in a five thousand. And if you have ten thousand square feet, you can have three family.
Right.
Okay? And what I'm saying is that if you're gonna have a two-family home or a three-family home, it does not have to be one over the other. This goes back to the day of the flood. You can have them side by side. Some would call that a townhouse.
Yeah, or duplex if it's just two, right?
Oh, duplex, okay, but two separate.
So definition.
But that's, but that to me is difficult.
That's a slight distinction as opposed to.
A row.
Opening up.
No, no, I don't want that. I totally agree with you.
Saying we can put three units side by side.
Yes.
As opposed to stack them and mass them the same as you would an apartment building.
Yes.
Right? Why would you say, no, you can't all climb up to your third floor? I mean, only one of you is allowed to do that.
When you look at the purpose of the MDR one zone, it was really to use the bigger, older homes in a way that, that could be afforded.
Different. That is rest, taking an existing home, large.
That was the purpose of MDR one zone.
This is the confusion.
That's architecture.
No, no, it's to maintain an older home where somebody's gonna sell it and convert it to a two-family, because it's in a two-family zone.
Pairs it down, what are you gonna build the new one out of?
That's the difficult.
Pay the taxes, right?
Yes, sure.
Does it have to be architecturally similar to what was in the neighborhood?
Now you went to the other board.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, some of, some of these things you can clarify relatively easily by saying that the purpose of the three families does not, does not work, does preclude having a row of three, three unit.
If, if it's so agreed.
That's, that's easy to specify.
If it's so agreed, if we agree.
You don't even limit it to three units. That's a whole nother ballgame. And I don't think anybody who sort of saw the code before thought that that was even a possibility.
No, because the, I'm repeating again, one family zone, if it's a two-family zone and you have more than ten, more than five thousand square feet, or five thousand or more, I can have two families. That's a two-family zone. And if you have ten thousand, you can have three families. Period. Where you put the families, I don't think we should get involved in.
But looking at all the different MDR one zones, row houses or townhouses would be fine in certain areas. I mean, it just, they would be in character with the rest of the neighborhood. Where in other, other, the, other places, they'd be too dissimilar.
But I, we're leaving, we're leaving the realm of what the whole purpose is. I think, you know, we can go on and on and on, but that is not the purpose of this.
Right. But in any case, I was just bringing that up because obviously the perception from the public, somebody who's not specifically paying attention to each application, they may have a different expectation of what's being used in those,
Sure.
zones. And when you define it, maybe you want to be careful about specifying so that it doesn't open it up to whatever, instead of what every normal person sort of envisions for the, for the village.
Absolutely. Good.
And that was.
Thank you. That, you're right. If it's, if it's not clear, you're gonna get multiple opinions. Talking about multiple opinions, you're back.
Sorry. I agree with the moratorium on, on townhomes, but I don't think we need more analysis on this issue. The code is clear in everywhere, in every part of it, except that appendix A. So, I mean, that's the only place where it's not clear. Every other part is consistent with the idea that townhomes are not permitted in the MDR one district. If you look at the intent of the MDR one, if you look at the difference in definition between MDR one and MDR two, and if you look at the definition of townhomes as well, I mean, it, it's, it's very clear. I, I just don't think we need to have more analysis. I'd say just fix appendix A now, take it out, and you're done.
I agree. Only if you promise. What are you carrying in your hand?
Those documents.
This is what I'm gonna say. Pat Steinsteiner, Broadway. Actually, I agree with almost everything I've heard tonight.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
I'm not gonna touch on those. I'm just gonna touch on some other, just some quick corrections. There is a big difference between MDR one and MDR two. MDR one is two and a half stories, twenty-five hundred square foot per residential unit. MDR two is three stories, eight hundred square feet per residential unit. Many of the things, it, it, there was a comment that about looking at different things and that this was somehow stimulated by something that happened last summer or with one project. Many of the changes we're talking about, the people who were on the land use committee have been talking about since we adopted the new code. Many of these things we think are conflicts, we thought were conflicts in September of two thousand and ten. We all said, well, let's get it done and then we can go back and fix this. So it's a mistake to think that this somehow was driven, all of this was driven by one thing. But I do think that one project is what involved the trustees. Getting trustees involved, David's not a trustee anymore, so I don't have to worry about offending him. It, it's a real problem. I've appeared before fifteen different boards or villages in the past year. None, except I'm sorry, has land use decisions being made by an elected board. They just don't. Everybody else does it a different way. They have experts just like this board making the final decisions. Notice is, this is one of the few villages that I've dealt with that you could go on for years in a review and not have to renotice. In Irvington, we're allowed three meetings. We renotice. So you, basically three months and then you just renotice. It's not a.
Even though you have a meeting each month.
Even, even though you have a meeting each month, you renotice because people, it keeps people aware of what's going on. But you don't need the green cards. You just do the certified mailings. We trust the U.S. Postal Service. If it's registered, you can track that. You know whether it's been delivered. Um, the number of stacks of returns that I get with the green cards means that an awful lot of people don't want it. They don't know what it is. They don't want to accept it. They don't get the notice, including certain retired trustees who I get their stuff back. They never opened the mail. They probably thought it was.
Wow.
I know what it is. The forty-five days for approval. There was a village that used to be right here called Dobbs Ferry that about five years ago had a process where it was forty-five days. If you, if the board didn't act within forty-five days, it was automatically approved. Except the forty-five days could be extended for an additional forty-five day period. After that, it could only be extended by mutual agreement with the applicant. When somebody would walk in and say, I demand you make a decision tonight. Your time is up. Make a decision tonight. The board had every right, every power to say, you want me to make a decision? We'll make a decision. We'll deny it. We did not have adequate time to come to a point of approving it. I don't think there's any risk of that. That does not. You go to court and you say, we demanded the decision. They denied me because they hadn't made a decision yet. The judge is gonna say, we'll go back to the Planning Board and work it out with them. So I don't think that that's a problem. I think we can have that. I don't think we have to make that complicated. There's conflict on the boards right now because of some things. There's conflict on the boards right now because of some things. Whatever reasons, the Architectural Review Board feels the way they feel, whatever this board, I think, you know, you all need to go for retreat, get together and all, you know, kumbaya, that kind of stuff. Everybody has to get on the same page, because you're really all working in the same interest. You're all volunteers, you all care the same. The biggest issue of concern I have is the idea that you have to, and this is very selfish on my part, because this is what I do. If we're required to have complete drawings to be able to go through an Architectural Review Board process before we have site plan review, it's just not practical. There has to be a way, which is what I'm going to hand out to you, a very simple way, where the Architectural Review Board gets the opportunity to apply on the site planning issues and make their recommendations to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board then can take that into consideration when they're making their decision. It then goes back to the Architectural Review Board. The Architectural Review Board, if they feel it needs to be changed, they come up with a neater idea, everybody thinks it's cool, they have to come back to the Planning Board. But it should be, at that point, it should be the AHRB requesting the amended site plan, because they think it could be better. In fairness to the applicant, the applicant shouldn't be, okay, now I have to go back and... And we've seen that. The sky exposure plane was a tool. It was not a zoning ordinance. It was intended as a tool, it should be used by both boards, and it is not something that is supposed to be, if you violate it, then you're denied. If you're violating, you have to explain why. And as we have done, we've had three very successful projects where we violated the sky exposure plane, we followed the procedure, we wrote the thing up, we gave it to the board, the Architectural Review Board, and they all said, this makes sense, we're fine. And some of those, we had to adjust it a little bit. Somebody standing up and saying, no, I'm not willing to adjust it, I'm not shocked that they're alienating the board and they get denied. And one thing, I'm hoping Dwight kind of mentioned it, that there are other things in the code that we've been talking about. One of the ones I'd really like to see get fixed is we have mistakes in the zoning map. We know that there are mistakes in the zoning map. That should get corrected before we've all retired, and some poor person walks in here and says, I bought a two-family on Maple Street, I'd like to renovate it, it's a problem right now, I'd like to renovate it, and they're being told, I'm sorry, but you're in the OF-4 zone, because the line got drawn down the middle of Maple Street instead of the middle of South Lane. So those are easy fixes. I think the Land Use Committee has a list of all of those that they could just do really easily. So if, I think we can get this fixed. I think you do need to act now. I think there are bigger issues that maybe will get addressed someday. I mean, some of us have thought it's crazy that the Board of Trustees would ever want to have that decision. They're elected. Why would you want to put yourself in a position where half the people are wondering whether they're going to vote for you again, because you're the one who's approving the project? So that's all. Thank you very much.
That was, that was, that was an argument presented by several people here tonight. Thank you. Anyone else? Hopefully?
I'm not going to say much. I feel compelled since Rob invited me to come, but I've enjoyed hearing this and brings back a lot of memories, but I don't miss it too much. But I do, I do want to address the issue of the, and I'm not going to express an opinion one way or the other, but the thinking was, when we revised the code in 2010, this issue of whether or not the Board of Trustees would have final say on certain projects, because that's the way it had been under the old code.
And before, right? This is, this is like, how long has this been the case?
Since the late 80s or 19...
Right. No, we did discuss, you know, on the board whether or not to get rid of that or not. And the thinking was that, for political reasons, that we wanted to keep that in the board's power, because, because the board is responsive to the community. And maybe, there may be a perception now that it's not, but...
By the way, I agree, David, because I've been at meetings, I've been at meetings where this discussion came up, and citizens called and said, no, we want the Board of Trustees.
So there's not a right or wrong answer, and it oftentimes is, you know, who the ox is getting gored at what time. But it was actually decided that your boards were not responsive necessarily, so people felt they wanted the Board of Trustees to have that authority, because they are elected. So what goes around, comes around. I'm not saying one way or the other, just some perspective, because it was debated, you know, back in 2008, 99, when I was, you know, when we were evaluating the new code, and just some historical background, so people can keep that in mind. But, you know, there is a way to change that, but I think it's not your, you know, maybe if you feel strongly that that should be changed, it would be, you know, go to the board and hear it from the Planning Board, perhaps on the fact that, I encourage everybody, you know, you know where the Board of Trustees is, and you got to go there. And there's an election in November, so there's other ways to have an impact as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
One more. Last one, you promise. Good.
Me, Constantine, just want to thank you all for reviewing this and really thinking about what we're all saying. I didn't hear tonight anything about the excessive, the similarity and similarity, that they were going to take out the massing in the cubable content language and that sort of language.
We're not going into that kind of detail on this change.
It was in the December 4th provision, and we did speak on it.
Latest trend we've got, I think this is where we stand, is to leave excessive dissimilarity and similarity where it was with the AHRB and the massing and volume and other measures.
Both boards.
But allow the Planning Board also to use those criteria for evaluating process. So you'd have both boards, nothing would be lost, but rather the Planning Board would add that review process into their...
We want both boards to do the total review. At this point, forget about this issue about changing rules with the Board of Trustees. Both boards then would advise the Board of Trustees on massing, on the similarities, dissimilarities, all of those items.
And it will be the same language that's there, then there'll be no words embedded.
We're not changing that.
Not changing.
Because in revision, there was that statement.
It was looked at, and then we decided to leave it the way it was.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it. Is that it? If yes, then nothing else. At the next meeting, we can continue this.
Let me just ask you a question.
Please, shoot.
Wait, before you all...
We didn't adjourn the meeting yet. If you want to leave, it's perfectly okay. Don't let us stop you.
Do, I thought that the idea was, but I don't know, I know it's late. The idea was to try to give the consultants direction around the rest of this memo. And the chair was very generous to open it up to the comments. It was good that we heard them. But I think if we can, it would be good to go through some of the things that we didn't touch on.
I thought he picked up all those points.
No, there are, for instance, there's a question of the evaluation of the sky exposure plane remaining with the AHRB. We should officially, I actually have a comment about that, which is, I think, number one, waiver is the wrong word. This waiver implies that it's a zoning standard. I think it should be consideration, the SEP should, I think, should remain with the AHRB and the Planning Board. I think it should be within, it's like these other things that relate to massing. It should be, both of us, both boards should look at it and have the ability to say something about it. Does anybody have any other comment on that? Otherwise...
I think that's what we agree on.
Good. So then, we talked about the approval thing, right? Although I don't know if you got, if you feel like...
No.
Okay.
Actually, can I just say my piece, and I won't bother you again about it, but I think that the more checks and balances, the better. I think all boards, both the Architectural and Historic Review Board and the Planning Board should have regulatory authority over all zones, and I'm perfectly happy with the Board of Trustees having final approval. But they can't, all they can do is turn the project down, they can't approve it over the regulatory authority of the other two boards.
Okay.
Thank you.
But that is in this other, I agree, but that, I mean, I'm not sure if I agree, but that's still in this other bucket for the moment, right? So then, we talked about the approval process, retaining the wording around massing, we covered that, right, Dwight?
Yeah.
You're okay for that? The three stories in the downtown in the DB zone, I personally, I'm okay with the idea that three stories is the baseline, and that there could be the possibility of a fourth story if it's done correctly, and if we recommend it and the Planning Board recommends it. I think it has to be, we want to combine it somehow with a height constraint. Is that right?
Forty-five in the DB and 40 in the DT.
Right.
There's also difficulty when you...
Do we all kind of agree on that?
Yeah, but the three stories, again, there's an issue when you get to the north side of Main Street, and you have the hill.
Right.
Are you going to count the story below grade, below the sidewalk?
No. What I, what's suggested here...
West side.
Projects in the DT and the DB that front on Main Street, which they all do, I think, will, the number of stories should be calculated from the frontage on Main Street.
From the curb up.
Yeah.
Right. So that if I want to go there, basically what I'm thinking about now, it's in front of the board, and I want to go down two stories, that's acceptable.
Right.
I'll go three up and two down.
Now whether or not you want to, now, if you want to make yourself crazy, you can go to the Hastings Code. They have, they don't have a sky exposure plane. They actually show a situation like a cross-section through Main Street, because they have a similar problem.
Yes.
They actually don't have just a line. They have a series of volumes that march down the hill or up the hill. So like, for the first 40 feet in, and I think this could affect like the building...
Yes, it would.
For the first 40 feet in, there's a kind of a volume, and then the entire volume steps down to, for another depth and so on. So it's like a series of building blocks either marching up or marching down the hill